Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of March 26, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr, Councilmember Arias.
I am here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir, Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. I see we have students from Bakersfield College, Professor Holmes class. Would you just raise your hand? Thank you so much for your participation in the civic process, and we hope that you'll learn something tonight and come back again. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Dr. Billy Rash, he's the pastor of Kern Christian Center, to offer our invocation. Pastor, thank you so much for your service as a Marine veteran. Thank you for serving as our BPD chaplain, and congratulations on your upcoming church's 40th anniversary. Also, thanks so much for your support of children and families with the Air Force Academy, just working to develop positive values and develop a balance of physical, mental, spiritual health. Following the invocation, we have a very special person to lead us in the pledge. Anthony Aceves, 7th grader at Freedom Middle School, won first place at the National Silver Gloves Boxing Competition in St. Louis. He's been boxing for three years with 21 fights under his belt, bringing home 18 trophies and belts. He trains at the Bakersfield Pal, and he wants to go pro. Pro, really. Not only is he an outstanding boxer, he has a 3.7 GPA, and he aims for the Junior Olympics. So, we're just so proud of you. Would you all please stand now?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmen, staff, the rest. May we bow our heads for a word of prayer. Father, we thank you that we're so grateful tonight that we're here not only in our city, representing our city, those that are called and appointed, that you've placed here at this time in this hour. We're so grateful. We're grateful for your wisdom. We ask you for divine protection and safety for our leaders, for our staff, and we thank you for an anointing of wisdom, to be able to guide and direct the people of this city, this wonderful, beautiful city that you've set us in, called us to, and appointed us to. So, we thank you for your presence, your wisdom, your guidance, your direction in every area, and we ask this in the matchless name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated, Pastor. We receive that wisdom. Anthony, if you'd just stay there, I'm gonna come down. Anthony, we are so proud of you. So, I want to present this certificate of congratulations in honor of your winning first place at the 2025 Silver Gloves Boxing Competition, and in recognition of your exceptional efforts and determination to pursue excellence. Congratulations on your outstanding achievement. Give it up for your achievement. All right, that's an achievement, and why don't you introduce your parents? Say how grateful you are.
I'm grateful for my mom, my dad. I forgot.
Thank you, Mom and Dad. Stand up, let's give it up for Mom and Dad. Okay, next time you're up here, you're gonna be on the Junior Olympics. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We'd request that you turn off your phones, please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Jeffrey Gutierrez, President of DeWalt Corporation, declaring National Surveyors Week in Bakersfield during the week of March 24, 2025.
Thank you.
Since the colonial days of the United States, surveyors have been leaders in the community, shaping cultural standards. Former notable surveyors include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, William Clark, along with our very own council member from Ward 4, Bob Smith. The city uses several firms for our surveying and mapping needs, and today, it's a joy to celebrate. I issue this proclamation. Whereas surveyors play an integral role in land development, from planning to design of our building sites, whereas there are over 52,000 licensed surveyors in the United States, more than 4,000 licensed land surveyors serving 40 million residents in the state of California, and 59 licensed land surveyors in the city of Bakersfield, including Councilmember Bob Smith. Whereas surveying has been an essential element in the development of the human environment since the beginning of recorded history, and is required in the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim March 24 through 28, 2025, as National Surveyors Week in our city, and call upon all citizens to recognize and commend surveyors for contributing to the construction and advancement of our community. It's my honor to be able to present this to Jeff Gutierrez. Councilmember, why don't you come down? You can introduce.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. You may talk, introduce your guests, and if Councilmember Smith wants to be celebrated, we will do that.
Absolutely. I'll shake Councilmember Smith's hand, fellow land surveyor. Honorable council members, thank you for this proclamation, for honoring us surveyors, our profession. I think very correctly is stated in the proclamation that we're essential to the development and proper management of a city like Bakersfield. I'm going to make one plea to you. There are 4,000 plus or minus land surveyors in the state of California. We serve 40 million people. That's the worst ratio in the nation. The average age of a land surveyor in California is like 57. So, we really see some hard times ahead of us with the numbers of land surveyors. I've been land surveying for 25 years. It's been a very great profession for me. I've been able to raise children and have a household with it. So, I want to encourage all of you that if you know a young person who likes being outdoors, maybe is good at math, encourage them to get into land surveying. I think it's a great profession. I have with me today some land surveying royalty. This is Kristia Shea. She works for Quadnoff here in Bakersfield, but she's also the president-elect of the State Chapter of the California Land Surveyors Association. So, I don't know if you want to address the city council?
Good evening, council members. Karen Go, Mayor Go, sorry about that. I would just like to turn around and all the students that are here for this city council meeting to consider land surveying as a profession. As Jeff said, it's a great profession, and it goes back a very long time, and we need more involvement.
Thank you, yes. Roads don't get built, sewers, water, buildings don't get built, nothing happens without surveyors. So, great profession, and more the better.
Thank you for your service. Please take a photo.
Presentation, item 4B, proclamation to Joe Turner, job spot administrator for the Bakersfield Adult School, declaring the week of April 7, 2025, as Adult Education Week in Bakersfield.
Thank you. Ms. Jody, you can't hide back there. You're an integral part of adult education, so come on up here. Mr. Turner? Come on up. It's always such a joy to go to the adult school and see adults who are passionate about learning. It's sort of different from going onto a high school campus where they have to be there, but here you have adults who want to be there because they want to be there. And so, thank you so much to both of you for your leadership in helping our adults continue to advance their education, and it's my honor to issue this proclamation. Whereas the state of California will observe Adult Education Week, April 7 through 11, 2025, and whereas the Kern High School District, along with its Board of Trustees, acknowledges that the Bakersfield Adult School serves the changing economic and cultural needs of a vigorous, expanding community, and whereas Bakersfield Adult School prepares more than 6,000 students to meet their academic, personal, and professional goals by enrolling in one or more of their diploma GED programs, and whereas in 2024, 254 adults received their high school diploma, 61 adults earned their GED, and 617 adults at Bakersfield Adult School and the Lerdau Detention Facility completed one or more career technical education programs, and whereas in 2024, 75 adults in Lerdau Detention Facility completed court-ordered parenting and neglect classes to reunite with their families, and Bakersfield Adult School graduated another class of its two-year vocational nurse program. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim April 7 through the 11, 2025, as Adult Education Week in our city, and salute the administration, teachers, and students at Bakersfield Adult School, and honor them for their efforts and accomplishments. It's my honor to be able to present this to Mr. Turner. Congratulations. You're welcome to offer remarks, and Ms. Jody, you also, whatever you would like to do. Go ahead. If you wanted to raise that, we're about to see that.
Thank you, Mayor Karen Go, and the City of Bakersfield. It is a tremendous honor receiving this proclamation in recognition of the Adult Education Week. The Kern High School District and Bakersfield Adult School, we are truly grateful for the support and recognition of our efforts. At the Kern High School District, Bakersfield Adult School, we deeply, we're deeply committed to supporting the students in their efforts and on their pathways to graduation. We are to empower individuals through career technical education and enrich their lives personally and professionally. We would like to take a moment to thank our teachers and staff for their efforts and incredible work in empowering students, learners, and their support and inspiring them and motivating students on their potential way every day. In addition, thank you, Andre Gonzalez, for the, we're excited about the job spot opportunity, the Renaissance. It will bring a, offer a unique opportunity for a positive impact on the climate and the community of the area of Old Town Kern. Together, we can create a vibrant community of lifelong learning and celebrate the opportunity of growth that can be realized. Thank you again for the recognition and the ongoing support for the adult education in our community. Together, we can continue building lives for a brighter future. Thank you.
While they take a photo, I just want to say, congratulations, Mr. Turner, and to all of your team at Bakersfield Adult School. Thank you so much for all the work that you do, and it's appropriate that this month celebrates adult education, because hopefully at the end of this month, we'll be opening the job spot at the Renaissance of Baker. This council, for years, has been focused on real opportunities to move people who are experiencing poverty into the middle class and beyond, and so, there's nothing, there's nothing more powerful than education and the resources that you provide at Bakersfield Adult School. So, I'm very honored to partner with you, and I know the full council is, and the whole city is super excited about working with you in the future. So, looking forward to celebrating Renaissance when it opens.
Thank you.
Public Statements.
Thanks. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times. Depending on the item, I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card, place it in the tray next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received six public speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first two public speakers are Sophia Felix and Heather Penella.
Welcome. Introduce, please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sophia Felix. I am the current Great American Cleanup Chair for this year, 2025. I'm also a board member. I've been a board member going on 15 years this June, but I'm here today to give a little information about Keep Bakersfield Beautiful and some of the events that we do throughout the year. This is just some highlights from last year's 24, 25, which I was the chair of that committee or the committee for that year. So, we had over 6,000 volunteers, we had over 1,000, I'm sorry, over 114,000 pounds of litter and illegal dumping cleanup. So, that's a lot of cleanup, and that isn't just one day, that was throughout the whole entire year that we did that. We had over 15,000 pounds of recyclables, we had a mural completed that we've done, and then we've also had different flower plantings and community gardens that we've been working with, the Greenfield Walking Group, and then recently, we reopened the I Street Garden, which is now called Compassion Community Garden. It's underway, and it's almost finished. So, I just want to give a few highlights. Our main event is coming up. We have Great American Cleanup coming up this April, it's gonna be on April 26. So, we are taking registration for captains still and also for members. So, if you are a team and you want to get, or have a team together that you want to get together, we still have that available. You can do registration all the way up until, I'm sorry, not May, Monday, holy moly, yeah, Monday, April 11. After the 11th, we are doing paper registrations. So, you can actually sign up all the way until the day of the event, which is April 26, but we'll do it by paper instead of over the internet and registrations. So, just a few highlights before I finish up. This year, from the 2024 GAC, which is Great American Cleanup, we had over 2,000 volunteers, almost 70,000 pounds picked up, and this is just one day, so it's not all the time, but just that one day, and we had over 80 locations that we picked up on last year's event. So, next, I'm gonna introduce Heather, who's gonna give you a little bit more information about that.
Thank you, Ms. Felix. Welcome.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city council members, and esteemed staff. My name is Heather Penella, and I have the pleasure of serving as the 2025 Vice Chair for Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. I'm also Mayor Go's appointed official for the group, and I'm here to talk about the mayor's Great American Cleanup High School Challenge. This, I believe, is our third year going into, and this is an opportunity for our local high schools to get involved. The winner is selected by the group that has the most volunteers that take place on the day of the Great American Cleanup. Mayor Go herself sponsors the first-place prize, which is $500. Also, there is a perpetual plaque. Last year's winner was South High School, but we've also had BHS, Go Drillers, and West represented as our winners in the past. Second prize is 250. Those go to the schools themselves. Teams can register at the, at keepbakersfieldbeautiful.us. I also wanted to, while I have the opportunity, to talk about if Great American Cleanup does not fit into your schedule, if you're here and you're listening. We do have opportunities year-round. We are a year-round organization, and we are here to serve the city, to find, to leave things better than we found them. So, if you or your group are interested in doing a cleanup, you can always call us and connect, we can help you, we have the tools for that. While we're here also, I would love to publicly thank our sponsors for the Great American Cleanup this year. Amazon is heavily involved, California Resource Corporation is heavily involved, the City of Bakersfield is always supportive, as we are a connected committee to the city, KV Print, Reyes Coca-Cola, Clean California, California Water, Frito-Lay, Telemundo, KGET, Corin Maine, Mayor Go, of course, and I failed this eye test at that bottom line. But please sign up and keepbakersfieldbeautiful.us. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Penella and Ms. Felix, and I encourage all of you to take part in this. Here's an opportunity for us to develop that culture of beautifying our community, cleaning our community, encouraging our young people to do so, and we look forward to seeing all of you there. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Johnny Alagaes.
Don't worry, I'm not serving you. I have these documents here for you guys. Typically, government contractors, sorry, I'll sort it over. Typically, government contracts are fair unless people like your employee, Kevin Peoples, are getting paid off by contractors. It's an open secret in the trucking industry that Kevin has deals with Bowman Construction and A&amp;B Trucking. We all knew why he pulled my contract April 2024, because he wanted his two cronies to give him his cut, costing taxpayers an additional $500,000 this last year. I presented the bid results for the April 2024 contract that Kevin chose the committee to select the hauler. If you look at the scores, he conveniently gave A&amp;B Trucking 96%, while the rest of the companies were given 80% or lower on their qualifications for the job. Now, the contract is back out this year for, I don't know why, I don't know what reasons. So, my question to you is, will this contract that is out, that is due next Thursday, or Wednesday, I believe, will this contract be scored fairly, or is Kevin's committee once again going to hand it over to Bowman Asphalt, the company that just so happens to use A&amp;B Trucking exclusively? So, who will choose the committee that scores the bid? And how will you ensure that Kevin doesn't cost taxpayers more money than he's already cost? Andre said that the goal was to move people, those experiencing poverty and moving them to the middle class, but that's not possible when you do what Kevin did to me and my business and my employees. So, if you want to help people, look into Kevin Peoples. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
I just want to ask a question of staff, if I can. Mr. Clag, can you briefly outline for the council and for the public what the process is for these types of contract bids?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez, Mayor and Council. Depends on the type of expense we have. Two typical processes, although there are some variations within those, but for a request for proposals, there's one process, and for what we call sort of a straight bid process, there's another process. We do create for the straight bid process, we create a pretty specific scope of work, specifications, and we post those on an online page that folks can go to and review, and then we have a specific timeline in which people need to submit their responses. Sometimes for larger projects, we'll actually do a question and answer, a bidders conference, so we can answer questions about those. And then, we actually have individuals open those bids, and we actually typically for our straight bid process, it's blind process, where we look at the information that is, you know, those employees that are directly responsible for it. There's a panel that has multiple, you know, individuals on it, so that we have various diverse reviewers, as well as where we're looking at just the qualifications themselves.
So, when you say there's a blind process, you're, I think that's an important point. So, you're saying that the committee members or the panel, the panelists are receiving the bids and the information, but they do not have identifying information in terms of the bidder?
That is accurate on most of our bids, the straight bid process. When we do a request for proposals, of course, you have to look at the content, you're looking also at the qualifications.
Sure.
But for the straight bid process, we just look at what is the low bid.
Okay, and in terms of who is on that panel, the selection committee, how does that, how does that get determined within the city?
Typically, we do have staff make those assignments to other staff. Depending on the nature of the project, we might actually ask a third party, you know, member from community or another agency, but typically, it's city staff that are assigned to review this. But again, we try and have a diverse, you know, set of individuals on a panel so that we have different perspectives.
And in this upcoming bid, who will be on the panel?
I'd look to Mr. Meyer, if you can clarify that.
Councilmember Gonzalez, the panel has not been determined at this time.
Okay, but typically, it is who?
For a panel like this, it would be a combination of public works managers, or maybe other managers in other city departments that have a very good understanding and knowledge of what's being proposed on.
Right.
So, it will probably come down to my discretion.
Right, so they have to be sort of, they have to have some level of content knowledge in order to assess the applications, I imagine.
That would be correct, and if we don't have enough staff within the city to make that assessment, as the city manager alluded to, we could look to other agencies for support like the county.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Go and esteemed council members. My name is Chandler Weber. I am actually a public information officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration, deployed actually in Los Angeles County, but we're finding that not a lot of people understand the role that SBA plays in disasters, and so, we're trying to outreach to all the contiguous counties. So, my goal for being here this evening, just kind of outline really quickly what our program is when it comes to disasters, and if heaven forbid, there is another natural disaster moving forward, you understand that we are of resources available. funding when it comes to natural and man-made disasters, far greater than FEMA or any other CAL-OS things of that nature. And what that kind of looks like, starting with physical damage, we actually are able to offer homeowners and renters as the majority of our assistance. So we just passed the $2 billion mark there in Los Angeles County. Of that 1.85 has gone to homeowners and renters. So if I leave you with nothing else, just know that the name may be small business, but homeowner and renters are our primary focus when it comes to natural disasters. And in that, we can offer up to $500,000 for physical damage that happened to the home and an additional $100,000 for personal property. So anything from your vehicle, clothes on your back, all the daily necessities. And then to the business side, we're able to offer up to $2 million for physical damage that happened to a business. So again, moving forward, just keep that in mind. How that affects Kern County residents in particular, though, we also have a loan called Economic Injury Disaster Loans, or IDOL loans. And what that looks like, they're designed to cover anything from your working capital to, you know, covering payroll, covering healthcare benefits, all the things to keep a business afloat if you suffered any kind of economic injury. And that loan is designed to stretch all the way out until October 8th is the deadline, just because as we move into the summer months, that's when, you know, economic injury starts to become more readily available. So just keep that in mind, that if you see a business struggling to stay afloat, we are a resource available. All of our terms offer a one-year of no payment, no interest accrual on those, and it can go all the way up to 30 years. Interest rates can be as low as 4% on those, and we're here to stay in the long term. If you have any questions, please give us a shout. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Weber, if the public needs to get in touch with you, what's the best way of doing that?
I can give my email address. That would be easy.
Whatever you choose to do there.
Is that okay for me to share that?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So my email address is going to be chandler, and that is C-H-A-N-D-L-E-R dot Weber, W-E-B-E-R, at sba.gov. Or you can also Google SBA Disaster, and there's contact information to get ahold of it. Any of us, there's about 12 of us here within Kern, San Bernardino, Orange County, and Los Angeles County as well, of course.
Mr. Weber, thank you for making the trip up here and providing that information.
Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Glenn Kleppich.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
My name is Glenn Kleppich. I'm sorry, I need to take up precious time here at a city council meeting. I actually sent an email first, called the number on the website. The person I spoke to said maybe I should try sending a letter, doing it the old-fashioned way, which I did. So as a last resort, I'm here to speak to you face-to-face. I recently went through the lengthy process, application process, to become a Bakersfield police officer. It includes, of course, the initial application, written test, physical test, several interviews, and then a lengthy background check. So it's quite a process. On October the 2nd of last year, I got an email saying that my name was removed from the eligibility list. It listed some reasons why any candidate might be removed from the list, but it did not say specifically why I was removed from the list. Now, I don't know what the policy is that stops them from telling me the actual reason, but I think that a little more transparency in this process would be a good thing. Because if a person is removed from eligibility without a specific reason, I think it's human nature to start wondering, was the process done without any undue bias or discrimination? I just turned 60 at the beginning of this year, and if that's too old to be a police officer, that's fine. I could get that. I could stand behind that if they just say, "Sorry, you're too old," or something. But I'd like to know what the reason is. So I wasn't sure where else to go. If someone here could point me the right direction, that would be great. Check your emails. I did send out an email, and I'd love to hear back from you on that.
Thank you, Mr. Kleppich. Mr. Clegg, is there, what would be the appropriate way for him to follow up?
We'll have staff follow up.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Jessica Sierra.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jessica Sierra. I'm here just as a mom, so I wanted to see if you guys could help our residential community with an issue we have. We moved into new, brand-new Leonard Homes in 2016. We chose that house specifically because I was pregnant with my first. And right across the street, there was supposed to be a park built. And to this day, my daughter is nine now, and the park still hasn't even gotten built or begun the process to be built. So I'm just wondering what the process is, what we can do for that.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony, would you be able to have somebody follow up, 93311 area? Thank you so much. Mr. Anthony probably has some background information there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra, for coming tonight. I think you raised a really important point that this council has been made aware of, which is that we have numerous parks where we've had land designated by property owners who've donated it to the city out of the kindness of their hearts with the intention of building those parks. And I know that staff is actively working. Mr. Anthony's going to provide, I think, some really helpful information. And I believe that there is an agenda item that is coming either at the next meeting or into the future. So City Manager Clegg, can you shed some light on any future pending items that are coming before this council as it relates to her issue?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Mayor and Council. Not being aware of the specific location, what I can say about undeveloped parks is that we set aside some funding in this last fiscal year to do the design work for one of our nine undeveloped parks. And then we have identified a couple of capital projects that didn't move forward in this last fiscal year, and we have a couple of, actually, emergency repairs at a couple of parks. But then staff will be recommending to council to set aside some of those savings from those other projects to begin on the design of another one of our undeveloped parks. And so because we have so many undeveloped parks, it's going to take some time to get at them. But we've begun the process of working towards design of the first few of those undeveloped parks, and we'll look at future budget cycles to continue to do more design.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Ms. Sierra, Mr. Anthony can meet you back there and just identify your specific area. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else in that group?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker for non-agenda items.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on items listed under Consent Calendar Item 7, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker is given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The Consent Calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Hearing Item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when your item is called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed under Consent Calendar Item 7?
Mayor Go, we've received two public speaker cards for items listed on today's agenda. The first speaker is Joshua Champlin.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Go, not board members, council members. My name is Joshua Champlin. I'm speaking on behalf of the County of Kern. I'm the Kern County Public Works Director. It came to my attention that Item 7G4, I believe, on tonight's agenda is setting a hearing for rate increases for sewer within the City of Bakersfield. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the city council that this does affect residents of the county. We have an agreement with the county, with the City of Bakersfield and what we call County Service Area 71. We have over 600 residents in this area who, per the agreement, one of the agreements that I've given you, they're required to pay the same amount that city residents pay. The only, the reason I come before you today is because this protest hearing that presumably would start tonight on approval from your board would take place in late May. If that protest hearing is unsuccessful, that gives the County of Kern insufficient time to run our own protest hearing before the end of our fiscal year, which runs in concurrence with the City of Bakersfield. So what that sets us up for next fiscal year is a deficit situation. So if that $700 per year rate increase happens in the City of Bakersfield, we're not able to get that on the tax roll in the County of Kern. And so that's somewhere in the $450,000 range for next year alone. And then we would proceed to do a protest hearing. However, there's a chance that that's unsuccessful, and then that leaves us, I don't know where that leaves us. So the county's request is that this item could be continued to a later board hearing so that we can discuss with city staff a solution for this. If not, pull this off consent. We can have robust discussion today about it in this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Champlin. Two of our council members have already requested that that be pulled off consent, so there will be discussion further down in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Matt Brady.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm here to speak on Item 7G4 on the sewer rates that the Public Works Director just spoke about. I'm glad to hear that two of the council members have asked that the item be pulled from the agenda. For those who aren't aware, the current sewer rate for single-family and commercial buildings is $239 per year, assessed to the property taxes. This would set up a Proposition 218 protest election for a rate increase to $950 per year, which is a $711 increase. For most single-family homes, I think that would be kind of an outrageous high increase. The median household income in Bakersfield as of 2023 was just over $77,000. That would bring this close to a 1% expense for most households. I would urge the council to look at a bond measure for this that requires an affirmative vote rather than a 218 election that requires a majority of the citizens to protest. Most citizens are just too busy to, you know, really pay attention to the mailers, every mailer that comes through the city, and to understand the nature of how a 218 election works. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers in this section?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7I for approval.
Thank you. Colleagues, does anyone want to recuse themselves? I have not seen that thus far. And now we do have a number of council members who have requested that items from the Consent Calendar be removed for separate consideration. Councilmember Coleman wishes to pull Item 7D2, 7E4, 7G3, 7G4. Councilmember Smith wishes to pull 7E12. Councilmember Gonzalez wishes to pull 7E3, 7E5, 7G4. And Councilmember Arias has requested that 7G3, 7G4 also be pulled. So the items to be pulled, which have a lot of overlap, would be seven items, 7D2, 7E3, Do we have anybody who would like to make a motion on the items other than those?
Yes, as the former vice mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the Consent Calendar with the exception of 7D2, 7E3, 7E4, 7E5, 7E12, 7G3, and 7G4.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Cor, and we're absent.
Thank you. And now we'll go through those seven items. First, we have 7D2 with a request by Councilmember Coleman to be pulled.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just hoping staff could give me a little bit more background on this. Specifically, this, we continue to invest in homeless projects, but, you know, the frustration or the concern is that we're not going to be able to have the money to sustain them. Can you talk a little bit about, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Ms. Byers. I didn't see you sneak up there. I apologize.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Mayor and Council, I will ask Ms. Byers to address that topic. I think one of the reasons you see a large dollar figure in our grant ask is that it includes long-term supportive services. It won't cost that entire amount to do the rehab of that property, but it includes some of those long-term wraparound services. Will let Ms. Byers add anything to that?
That's correct. So the Home Key Plus, it is to support the development of permanent supportive housing for veterans and individuals at risk or experiencing homelessness and those with mental health or substance use challenges. The program does require that the project be in existence for 55 years. It's a very long-term program. In order to get the services, we are partnering with CAP-K, as well as California Veterans Foundation. The funding that we're requesting, it is a grant amount not to exceed $35 million. A portion of that is for the construction, but a lot of it is for our services as well. We're working with Behavioral Health. All of these projects require a lot of layering. At minimum, we need to show that we have enough services for five years, and then the grant matches that as well. And so the request that we're asking is because we think we found enough funding for services for five years, and then they would match that for another five years.
And where's the five years, where's that money coming from? Is that from the general fund, or is that from grants?
No. It comes from a variety of sources. CAP is one of the funding sources that we utilize frequently. Behavioral Health also has resources available through the Prop 1 bond measure, and so the services also are partnered with what CAP-K does and the resources that they have, as well as the Veterans Foundation. And so this is not a request for general fund resources to match.
And I'm, I didn't know what this designation was, 30 PSH units. What does PHS stand for?
Permanent Supportive Housing.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. You know, we really, really need this transitional housing for, we had this conversation in the homeless meeting yesterday, is that we have a backlog of people in the shelters, in the Brundis Lane Advocations Center, the Mission, and the Open Door Network, because we're not able to get them into housing. But we need to get them out of those shelters. We need to get them into more transitional housing so we can free up the shelter space. And so, does this help with that, or no?
It does. So the Home Key Plus, it is very specific for those that are the most difficult to reach that are homeless, those that do have substance use, those that do have mental health challenges. And so by having them all at one facility, we're able to have those onsite services, ways to get their driver's license, ways to become more productive, see if there's some family reunification. I think the city has done an amazing job making sure that we have resources to connect them to family members. But this helps the journey of having onsite mental health providers, health providers. All of those resources will be available to them. They don't have to try and catch a bus to get to a therapist. Those therapists will be there onsite, really working towards becoming productive citizens.
What kind of safeguards are implied? I don't, maybe you can't speak to operations, but safeguards to be sure that the properties are maintained, people don't are maintained, people don't destroy rooms and that kind of thing.
Before we go to Ms. Byers, the city attorney wishes to make a comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman, I just wanted to clarify for you and for the public, this is a resolution to simply apply for the grant. I can tell you that because I've worked closely with Ms. Byers on this, and I've also actually worked on the agreement, which if we get the grant, then that would be an agreement. And then some of those questions, again, I'm sure Ms. Byers can answer them now. But the agreement that is in draft form right now with CAP-K clearly indicates that if we don't get the grant, the agreement's not going forward. This is simply a resolution to apply for the grant. Period, end of discussion.
Thank you. Can you answer my question before I move on?
Like she stated, we are doing this in partnership with CAP-K and the Veterans Foundation, as well as Behavioral Health. All of those are well-known to our community to be good partners. And so by having this with them, they would be the ones onsite, making sure that the facility runs smoothly. We have had challenges. When you first open up such a facility, you have quite a few people who have either come straight from homelessness or those that have come straight from having mental health challenges. And so in the beginning, it does take some smoothing out, but like the 1889 Oak has shown, they start to take ownership of their home because this becomes their home. And so that helps in the process.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, the city attorney, for clarifying that for me. I would, if there's no other discussion, I would make the motion to approve Item 7D2.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Gonzalez has a request to speak before we take the motion.
Yeah, before we do, I just want to reshape this conversation a bit because I think it is a huge win for the City of Bakersfield, and I think it's been understated and underemphasized. And there's actually multiple wins. Number one is, you know, in the community overall, there are a number of community assets, and there are many of community liabilities, places that are underutilized or unutilized, places that have high volume of calls for service, and whether it be police or fire or code enforcement. And the Ram Kabeer, the former Ram Kabeer Hotel used to be a huge liability for the city. There were a number of complaints, or a number of concerns. There were people who were living there permanently in unsafe, unhealthy conditions, to the point where environmental health at the county actually closed the property along with code enforcement. Vacant buildings are huge liabilities in themselves throughout the city. And we know what happens when a vacant building remains vacant for too long, especially in the urban core. The fact that, A, the city, at my request and the request of many community members, actually got to work and purchased that property right away was amazing. I was really impressed. It is a good example of hard work and swift action and agility that I hope to see a lot more of from City Hall. So that was a huge win. The second win is the fact that we're able to partner with a nonprofit community action partnership to actually find a solution or an opportunity to turn this building around into a more productive use. This could be a huge win, not just for the property and not just for the residents who will now have a permanent home along with supportive housing, but it'll also be another step forward in helping us revitalize and turn around Union Avenue, which is a huge issue for many of us in the community. So I am excited about this project. I'm of full support, and I just want us to, I just wanted to lift that up because I think it's really meaningful and in a lot of ways monumental for us to move forward. So thank you so much, Ms. Byers, and thank you to your team for all the work on this project. Appreciate it.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Coe and Weir absent.
Okay. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm glad the motion passed. I just wanted to make a point about grant opportunities and grant funds. You know, these are dollars that are, you know, being sent to Sacramento and DC, and each and every opportunity that we have to apply for some of those funds to come back into our community. I think it's a great opportunity for us to at least submit an application. And what better city to spend those funds than right here in Bakersfield? So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to 7E3, which was pulled by Councilmember Gonzalez.
I am very excited to make the motion to approve 7E3 tonight. This is an economic opportunity area grant, an agreement with Moo Creamery. For those of you who may not be aware, Moo is probably the most popular restaurant in the City of Bakersfield, and it has been for quite some time. And they have decided to move to downtown Bakersfield. And downtown Bakersfield continues to get better and better and better because of private investment from local business owners and property owners. And I'm super excited that the city will be able to support this project in a very modest way with a grant agreement of $83,513. We have the owner here tonight, Jessica Pounds. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. Congratulations on all of the success thus far with your restaurant. And I know you are just going to kill it in downtown. And so we're all super excited. And yes, we're working on parking issues and trying to address those issues because we know that so many people are going to come downtown just to visit Moo and what will be a very beautiful, beautiful space for the whole community to enjoy. So congratulations again. Again, my motion is to approve.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes. And Ms. Pounds, I will be there for the Brussels sprouts.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Coe and Weir absent.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to 7E4. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Byers, we're at it again.
I know.
Welcome. Thank you. So can you share with us a little bit about what's going on with that grant termination?
Yes, I can. So in last year's, similar to what Ms. Pounds applied for, we have the downtown competitive EOA.
Turn that microphone towards you.
We have the downtown competitive EOA. Bakersfield Sound applied for it last year under our last year NOFA. They were awarded $49,000 for rental reimbursement. Two of our sections in that agreement included the requirement that the business be located within the EOA and in operation for at least one year to be eligible for the grant funding. They did choose to go back to their original location on Rose Hill Highway, which is in the county. And because of that, they were no longer eligible to receive the remaining funding of $9,000. So at this time, staff is requesting council terminate the agreement and not pay the final $9,000 for the business that's now located in the county away from the downtown EOA.
So do you have any idea what the reason was that they moved out of the EOA?
It's interesting in the downtown, and it's a conversation that we have frequently, that it's a little bit more challenging when you go into these older facilities. There's an item coming up on public hearing for actually the same location in order to get fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers in some of these older buildings doesn't exist. And so if you want to have an activity that has greater than a certain number based on the occupancy load determined by the fire department, you're unable to have those. And so Bakersfield Sound wanted to have some live events. They wanted to have classrooms. There were a couple of things that they were hoping to achieve when they relocated to the downtown that they just kind of struggled a little bit in the building that they had selected. And so they went back to where they already had music rooms and that kind of thing.
So when we evaluate a business for one of these grants, aren't those the kinds of things that we, well, let me back up. What is our process for reviewing the grant application? And do we offer any kind of business operations management kind of assistance?
Specifically, what we have based on the grant application or the NOFA in the competitive, there's a scoring criteria, and so it is scored by staff. All of the applications are scored by staff. Usually, it's, one of the biggest things we have is reactivating a vacant space. That's one of the things that Moo Creamery is doing. They're activating a space that has been vacant for a while, where Bakersfield Sound had selected had been vacant. And so with them locating there, it was bringing new arts, new culture, which is some of the items that we have specifically in our Making Downtown vision. And that's how that one was scored. We thought it was a good project. Some of the things we do is coordinate meetings with all of the departments. We have to ensure that there's not prevailing, if there is prevailing wage, that for projects that are subject to that, that they know the rules and requirements and how to get through that process with the Department of Industrial Relations. If they need a building permit, we'll coordinate a meeting with them, sometimes in the downtown because the properties are at zero lot line. If they want to do a sign, they need an encroachment permit. So there's just a variety of rules to the different projects. We have done 73 completed projects with EOA funding. This is the first one that hasn't completed all of the items in the agreements, and because of that, we felt that we shouldn't pay that final $9,000.
So do we offer support services after the grants are initiated, like during this period of time? Are there support services? Somebody, you know, reaching out to them? How's it going? You know, because it sounds like we didn't totally evaluate the business and whether it would really work in that location before we gave them the money.
We felt that it could be a very successful location for that business. They needed some building permits. They needed, fire sprinklers are just one of the unfortunate things that don't exist in a lot of our downtown businesses.
Okay. Are we at risk of losing some other businesses for these kind of reasons?
Typically, what we do, we work with them throughout the process. They meet with staff when they come in for invoicing. As Jessica's about to find out, when she goes to get her building permit, we are there for her to walk it through. We have the white glove team. We've talked about a lot of things with development services and public works. How can we coordinate this better for our businesses? And in fact, I'm going to be requesting that we do that with both of you guys for a different project. But we will frequently meet with someone, especially if we see that they're struggling to get through the process, because our goal is for these businesses to be successful. It's hard to navigate through the process that we have, and that's why we're looking to form that one-stop-shop.
Thank you. My last, I won't say it's the last question because it kind of depends on your answer. Our agreement that we have with the business that we give this grant money to, who writes that document? Is that some kind of state thing or?
It's not. It's a city staff writes the agreement, and then we work with the city attorney's office for the language before we either bring it to city council. With EOAs, the authority is up to $40,000 for city staff to approve, well, for the director to approve. Greater than $40,000, it comes to city council. If it's greater than $100,000, it does require a public hearing, which is why you see a difference between the two that are on the agenda tonight. Anything that's greater than $100,000 is required by government code for an economic development subsidy, and it requires a separate public hearing. So it's a process we work on with the city attorney's office.
So is there no recourse in those agreements that, you know, you talk about that we don't have to give them the rest of the money, or may not during that first year, but there's no recourse for the money we've already given them?
Yes, there is. We can sue them for breach of contract.
And?
It's up to council. If you'd like to do that, I'm more than happy to put it on a closed session for discussion. That's what it is. It's a breach of agreement. They did not, they did not stay in the location that they promised to stay in for one year after receiving the grant money.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion on this.
You can go ahead and make the motion. We have two requests to speak.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to, well, actually, I think I'm going to make a motion to send this back to staff and have this reevaluated. I agree with getting the $9,000, not paying the rest of the $9,000, but I don't think that we should, I think we should make an effort to collect the money that we have paid out. I think that we owe that to the other businesses that endure. And, you know, it seems awfully short-sighted that you come into a business and pick a spot and, you know, you can't get through a 12-month period of time. So I'd like to have that reconsidered.
So for clarification, then, is that a motion to approve the termination and refer the remainder back to staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman and City Attorney. Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Is there a way in the future for applications or contracts that we can add some verbiage that has some contingency on them actually fulfilling a certain amount of time so that taxpayer money is not wasted?
Mayor, Councilmember, we already had that in there for a year. If you'd like to change it to a different time period, of course, that's a policy, that's a policy question that can be, that can be discussed at one of your committees. But that language is in there, which is why we're able to terminate, you're able to terminate and not pay the nine, and why you may have a breach of contract action against these folks for the remainder.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah, I'm going to defend our small businesses for just a moment because it is very difficult. I've been with almost every single one of these applicants and grantees in their process, and it's very difficult to start a new business period or to build something new. And it's even more difficult to do a redevelopment project, an infill project in downtown Bakersfield or in Old Town Kern or in southeast Bakersfield. And that's exactly why we have this EOA program, to provide incentives for new businesses to come into the core. Otherwise, it's very difficult to sell these neighborhoods because of the aging infrastructure, because of the lack of accessibility, because of all of the off-site improvements that are placed upon new business owners, new developers. That's additional costs. And when you talk about replacing aging infrastructure, it gets expensive. And so we have to provide these EOA incentives for businesses if we want to see downtown continue to revitalize. And, you know, I would argue, and maybe we should send this to committee, because I would argue that most of our applicants, when they get reimbursed, they actually fulfilled their contract agreement. They actually did what they said they were going to do. This is all reimbursement-based. We award an amount, they go out, they fulfill their obligation, and then we reimburse them. And staff does a great job providing due diligence, ensuring that the projects are actually fulfilled. We know, I think all of us can understand, that not every business in the world succeeds. And sometimes businesses fail. And sometimes businesses fail sooner than they had expected. And I just want to caution all of us to understand the business climate. We awarded contract, or EOA grants prior to the pandemic. The business owner didn't know that there was going to be a global pandemic and businesses were going to be shut down for months and they were going to have such hardships. So, you know, I want us to be business-friendly and have this climate that we're leaning in, in favor of business owners, especially those who are doing the right thing, that are getting their bids in, who have made it through this application process that I feel is already arduous and cumbersome enough, that we actually go in and try to support them as best we can. I agree with you, Councilmember Coleman, we need to provide some additional supports and white glove treatment, but it should be more of a support in walking with people and less of a, you know, we don't need another auditor on their backs as they're trying to make their business go. It's very sad when businesses don't do well and when they have to move on. But we know that's a reality, that's a reality. And I want to make sure that this city is in support of business owners and particularly those who are trying to do something really special in our urban core.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
I would just like to say, Councilmember. I would just like to say, Councilmember, I agree with everything that you're saying about empowering, as a businessman, I agree with what you're saying, empowering businesses, helping them, wanting to see them thrive. I get that. I support that 100%. But this is $40,000 of taxpayer money that is gone. It's not an allowance. It's not your piggy bank or mine. It's the taxpayer money. And I think that we should do a good job of protecting our constituents when we have conversations about parks not getting built, wasting money on projects that, it's taxpayer money. A business fails, if my business fails, it's my money. I didn't waste taxpayer money. My business didn't shut down. It didn't affect, I wasn't a bad steward of tax, taxpayer money. Just want to remind you, it's taxpayer money. It's 40 grand that's gone, that taxpayers paid. That's it.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney, do we have, as a government entity, do we have a legal obligation to file suit and to recoup those funds as it relates to any public gift of funds?
Mayor, Councilmember Arias, that's a very good question. And frankly, I think with the motion by Councilmember Coleman and the referral back, I'd like to look at it, and I'd like to reflect a little bit more. And I think frankly, that's why you have these discussions in closed session with regard to potential initiation of litigation and not necessarily on the dais for the first time. So I appreciate the question. It's a valid one, and I need to get you an answer, all of you an answer. And if we're going to do that, I'd like to do it in closed session.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that that's an important, that information is going to be really important as we consider whether or not to move forward, because there may very well be a legal obligation for this body to take action. And I know that, I think all of us on this dais have a heart for our small businesses, but at the end of the day, it's important for us to make sure that we are protecting against all liabilities for the taxpayer in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Core, and we're absent.
Thank you. And now moving on to 7E5, Councilmember Gonzalez.
A motion to approve 7E5.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Core, and we're absent.
Thank you. And now 7E12, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to agreement with RINCON for preparation of the general plan update. And we've been working on the general plan update for, it seems like six years or seven years, and it was going to be a two- or three-year process at that point. And now we're extending it another year and a half. And I know that's how things work. But I'd like to address, you know, we've, we've talked about, we got the housing element part of it done. And I've always said the circulation element was the next important item that I felt needed to happen. And we do talk a lot about traffic fatalities and, you know, perhaps changing our street system and the circulation element would help do that. So I don't know if this is an opportunity to move the circulation element ahead of the rest of the timing that's happening, if we could do that. And also, we've talked about the traffic impact fee, and it was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. And I had discussions this week with a business owner, and those things are always coming up. And, you know, I think that needs to be looked at with the circulation element. So is that something that could be moved up or possible? Mr. Burns?
Sure. Councilmember Smith, this particular item tonight is to say, just it's changing the date, because we're going to be on the date in the current contract. The housing element, we are still in process. We're getting ready to go back with our fourth submittal. When we look at the general plan, and April 23, we'll be bringing from the council the framework for all of the elements, circulation element included. I have already met with a couple of the council members about the framework. I talked to you earlier today about making sure we have that meeting also. So I think the general plan is on, on course that it'll be back from this dais in the fall for approval of the general plan itself. So if there's specific things, definitely, we want to get that input on the circulation element, and we look forward for those conversations. But those things are actively moving on. Our consultant is working on those items.
I thought the date that I read in the administrative report was December of '26.
So please keep in mind, Councilmember Smith, that that also is the time to, for the EIR to be done. So we will finish the general plan itself, then the consultant will take about a year to process the EIR, to bring it back to this body for overall approval and certification.
So back specifically to the traffic impact fee, that is part of the general plan update or no?
Councilmember Smith, that would happen after the general plan has been adopted. Then we go back and start that process. So you're probably looking in 2027 for that process.
So that's after the EIR, everything's finalized?
It has to be adopted and certified.
And that's another EIR? That's another environmental document?
Yeah.
Mayor, Councilmember Smith, as you know, that's a nexus document, and times have changed over the years, but I would imagine that's probably another EIR. Whether we could tear off of the general plan EIR was probably something that should be looked at by RINCON.
Yeah, if we can tie it together, that would be good.
Right.
Thank you. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the item.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Core, and we're absent.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to 7G3, which was requested to be pulled first by Councilmember Coleman and then Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Coleman.
Well, you know why we're here. We talked about the water. So we're going to have a little staff presentation, then we can kind of get into the questions.
Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. In anticipation of questions on this topic, we do have a brief presentation that we go walk through related to this item. I'll ask our Director Budak to do that.
Good evening, Mayor Go and Council. I'm here today, Chris Budak. I'm the Director of Water Resources, Water Department, sorry. And I have with me the Assistant Director of the Water Department, Daniel Malnato, Water Resources. And so I'll call him up periodically if I feel questions that I cannot answer and I need support. So, sorry, let me step up. So we're here today to talk about our municipal water rates. Our municipal water rate is included in the billing for the residents, and it's included as a readiness-to-serve, which is basically your meter rate, as well as your usage rate. We have a need to increase these rates due to expenses incurred associated with operations and maintenance of the existing system, as well as increased cost to utilities, and also increased cost associated with regulatory regulations for state and federal. The municipal service air system is responsible for providing safe, clean drinking water to over 165,000 residents. We acquire pumped surface water, and we utilize our wells to distribute that water into our distribution system. We also acquire water from the Kern County Water Agency Improvement District Number Four, about 75, sorry, 6,500 acre feet per year. And then we also acquire treated water from Cal Water, two treatment plants in the Northeast and one in the Northwest. In addition, because 70% of our supply actually comes from groundwater, we're required to meet all of the regulatory requirements for water quality. They include 123 TCP, H2S, PFOS is the latest one that we now have to treat for. And it's not just about the capital cost, but it's also about the ongoing maintenance cost. The capital cost to install the vessels, but then the maintenance cost to change out the granular activated carbon, as well as to monitor the, the water as we use it to determine when we have to replace that, that carbon. And then there's regulatory sampling, because we have to do reporting annually. In addition, in 2025, conservation regulations was implemented, where we now have to look at our residential water use. And we have a goal and a requirement to reduce our residential use by 40% by 2040. And so we have to implement a conservation program to be able to do that. Finally, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, we have included costs in here, because we are currently working with the state board. We are not currently in probation, but if that were to happen, there would be additional costs associated with having a well, owning a well, as well as a cost to pump the water out of that well. Our system, in general, we have aging areas within our system, and we have significant well rehabilitations at times, as well as service line replacements. And those are just costs that are ongoing maintenance costs that we have to continue to pay for. The city's domestic service area is outlined in blue. Within that area, we have 67 wells, 59 of which are operational, six storage tanks, 630 miles of pipeline, distribution line, as well as 50,000 meters and service connections. I want to identify that the, within the service area, every single ward has a little piece within the service area. So the, this increase will impact all of the wards. It is important to highlight some of the significant costs associated with the capital improvements, as well as operation and maintenance. We have, as of 2025, we now have to treat for PFOS. We've identified nine wells within our system that have to be treated. These nine wells have to, to be able to utilize them past April 2029, we have to have PFOS treatment on these wells at approximately $2 million per well, plus the ongoing costs of changing out that carbon, as well as doing sampling. In addition, we currently have about eight wells that have H2S vessels, that that is a corrosive gas, and it basically eats the vessels from the inside out. So we've evaluated that they have to be replaced, and we estimate that cost to be about $1 million per well. We have identified four wells that also continue to need TCP treatment. We did a large project of approximately 35 sites in the past, and we have this ongoing requirement to continue to make sure that any wells that get identified with TCP are also treated. Finally, generators are part of our American Water Infrastructure Act of 2018 to ensure that if we have a power outage, we have the backup generators to be able to keep the wells running. Those wells are now being, or sorry, those generators are now being impacted by various regulations, and we would need to replace them. So we have a generator program put in place to replace those generators that we currently have on sites. In addition, there's our operation and maintenance cost, water quality, lead and service line inventory. In, before we used to look at our lead lines, as well as the line from the main to the meter, we're now required to look at the meter to the home. So we have an evaluation where we have to go and identify if there's any lead service lines in the actual private property. Again, conservation has a reduction from 40%. With that, advanced metering infrastructure, AMI meters, this is an important program. We got a grant for about 5,500 meters. These meters allow our residents to look at their water use in real time. So if we're going to implement a conservation program, we really need to get these AMI meters into all of our, on all of our homes, so that people can be looking at their water use when we're telling them they need to reduce, they can see it on a, on a daily basis, real-time data. Overall, we all know that electrical costs are going up, and we also, because we acquire water from treatment plants, as well as groundwater, costs for water are also going up. To determine our rate increase that's needed, we have worked through with our staffing and our superintendents and our, and Cal Water, and we all worked together, and we've determined that there is, we developed a 10-year infrastructure master plan. This master plan will identify our capital projects and also help us meet our regulatory requirements. We also looked at our operations line by line, and we identified areas that we would need to increase, as well as areas due to services that would be increased by a CCI or personnel that we just assumed a 4% increase over time. We inputted all this information into, and identified all of our expenses, and we offset that with our revenue. We then evaluated what the revenue would need to be to ensure that we can meet the requirements that we've set forth in our 10-year infrastructure master plan. As a result of that, we have identified that we recommend, or sorry, as a result of that, we took this presentation to the Water Board on May 12, and at their direction of the Water Board, as well as working with Finance Department and City Manager's Office, there's a recommendation to increase over five years, a 34% increase in year one, so starting 2025, fiscal year '25, '26, 6% in years '27, '28, and then 3.4, sorry, 2.4% in year '29, '30. This allows us to stay above our target reserve, which is the dark black line, and ensure that we have a healthy fund moving forward to address any concerns or issues that are not identified in our 10-year plan. Finally, the dash line on this particular slide shows that if we do not do anything and just continue at the current rates that are proposed, we will reduce fund balance within approximately two years. We did do an evaluation, and we looked at comparing ourselves to the other water purveyors within the city of Bakersfield. We did utilize a 1-inch meter rate, as well as an assumed 15 CCF per home, to develop this chart. With the proposed rate increase, we would be just slightly above Oildale Mutual, but we would still be cheaper than Vaughan Water, Cal Water, and East Niles. And I covered a lot of information there rather quickly. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Budak. Back to you, Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank you for sharing what you know about this. You've been very generous in talking to us offline. So thank you for coming here today and, and sharing this with us. You, you can sense how frustrated the residents are going to be when we were here less than three years ago, and we raised the water rates. And the presumption was that, you know, you did water, you did projections of what the costs were going to be over that period of time, and what the rate needed to be. So can, and you kind of talked about it, but you kind of talked about it in engineering kind of terms. And so I'm going to ask you to be more clear about the impact of some of these unfunded mandates that have been imposed on us, and what that true impact is.
So, yes, when we did the rate study a few years back, there was a recommendation. And through the process of discussing it with the group, it was decided to actually implement a rate increase that was, that was less than what was originally recommended. So we moved forward with the rate increase of a 10, 10%, the first year, 6, 6, 6, 6. At that time, we were not aware of the requirement for, we knew that there was discussions about PFOS, but we didn't know what the regulation would require. We were sampling, sorry.
What is that?
PFOS is a water quality chemical that is within the water. I would not know, we just refer to it as PFOS.
Just talk to your grandma. Explain it.
There we go. Matt, can you help me?
I think he just wants you to explain it in layman's terms.
So, so we have many constituents within the water. I am not a water quality expert. And we have, and that's where Matt was going to probably, because he's been more involved with the legal side of it.
Contaminant.
It's a contaminant in the water, yes.
Let's get back to the little words that we're doing.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. So because we have to remove that contaminant from the water, like we do with 123 TCP or H2S, any water contaminant, we have to put in a treatment. The treatment will be, and there's actually a picture of it right here. These are vessels that are These are vessels that are TCP vessels. They look the same for PFOS, and we put carbon in the middle, and we have to basically run the water through and ensure that that contaminant gets absorbed in that carbon. So there's the capital cost of just the investment. And then there is the monitoring cost. We have to continue to monitor the water quality to determine when that carbon stops working. And then we also have to submit reports to the state annually to let them know how we're treating for these contaminants. So we did 35 sites of TCP. We're now going into the evaluation of PFOS, and this is just part of being able to provide a groundwater supply. And again, as stated, 70% of our water comes from the ground. So no matter what the contaminant is, whether it's arsenic, whether it's PFOS, whatever the maximum contaminant level is, that's defined by either the state or the federal government, we have to meet that requirement before we can provide that water to the people.
Mr. Clegg, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Go, and thank you, Ms. Budak. If I could just summarize down to three key factors. One is, we did have some known capital challenges that we didn't raise our rates as high to meet some of our known capital issues three years ago. We probably could have gotten by and stretched that out over a longer timeframe. However, two very new regulatory requirements have been landed on us, and it is these additional contaminants that we have to address, and it's the water conservation. Those two new factors are driving huge cost increases that just don't allow us to stay afloat at the same rates as we set the five-year plan two years ago.
So the water conservation is basically going to make us spend money to earn less money? Because we're going to spend money to upgrade our systems, and then we're not going to sell as much water?
Very well stated, yes.
You still have to maintain the system to be able to meet fire flow, to meet pressures, all those different things. So even though you may use less water, you still have to maintain the system that you have to be able to provide the water.
So did you say there was a, the mandates for a 40% decrease in water usage by residential homeowners?
Only residential, yes. It's a 40% reduction by 2040, and to be able to do that, we need to encourage people to conserve. There is a program within Cal Water that we're partnering with to start really getting that out to our residents, that we need to look at lawn to garden, yeah, lawn to garden, try to remove the turf. There's also a need to look at people's irrigation systems and see if we can't use less water with the irrigation systems. And it's a requirement by the state that we have to get there. We have 15 years to get there.
And what have you done to project the true cost of these capital improvements? Is this just an estimate, or have you had bids, or what are you doing on that?
So we recently just bid a PFOS well, CBK 25, so we have that cost. We utilized that cost for the evaluation of doing the first four wells, and then we also put an inflator on it, I mean, a CCI, a construction cost index. So we did not only use today's dollars, but we also escalated them based on the information that we have.
And do you anticipate, these are going to be projects that are going to be managed by your people, or are you going to have to contract a project management company to do those?
Looking at all the improvements that we have, we do anticipate utilizing some construction management firms. We are also looking at putting a construction inspector within our department so that we can have that person take on some of the jobs based on the workload. So we're going to try and do a combination of both, but we do anticipate utilizing consultants.
So what other areas have you explored to pay for some of this stuff besides raising the rates? Have we looked for any grants or any federal or state funding to take care of some of this stuff?
PFOS, PFOS a little bit?
Mayor Go, councilmembers, good evening. My name is Matthew Callum, Deputy City Attorney, and I'm assigned to the Water Department. I can give you a quick update.
You raise the microphone, please.
Excuse me. I can give you a quick update on some of the efforts the city has made towards what we just called the PFOS issue. We are actually engaged in litigation. We are, the city of Bakersfield is a party to what's known as a multi-district litigation case. I won't bore you with the details, but what it is, is that there's a federal case that is being handled out of South Carolina, and the city is one of hundreds of plaintiffs that are suing 3M, Tyco, BASF, BASF, and a number of other PFOS producers. I encourage you to take a look at it in the news. We can also, of course, give you a more up-to-date status of this. My point in telling you this is that there have been settlements that have been reached that are going to be significant. However, I can't tell you exactly how much money that's going to be, but the funds that will be sent to the city will be used to offset the costs of PFOS mitigation, just as the director has gone over. From what I understand, the PFOS mitigation is mostly going to be, I think, very similar to the TCP 123. Is that correct? That's right. So we'll be using GAC, I think it's a granular activated carbon. Again, my point, I might be getting past my bailiwick with what I know about the engineering side, but there is money that the city will be receiving as a result of these settlements. As far as other grants, we have not pursued any of those opportunities. There frankly haven't been too many grants. There have been some funds, I believe, from the federal government, but at the moment, no, we have not pursued those. Those have just, we have not.
If I may, Mr. Callum, I would just add, councilmember, that typically there are very few grants for rate-based types of services. Many of the grants are more related to some of the discretionary or general fund type items. There are some revolving loan funds for large projects, that if we enter into a big enough project, we could request assistance from a state revolving loan, or the federal government has WFI revolving loans that we could look at for some of our larger projects. But they're really, for utility, rate-based utilities, there's very few grant opportunities.
Thank you. I think one of my last questions is the financial burden on the residents, excuse me, the financial burden on the residents, and whether there are any assistance programs for low-income residents.
Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you. So one of the rules around rate-supported activities are that we cannot have one rate payer pay a greater share than another rate payer, and so we don't have assistance programs allowed under the rate structure. That being said, if the city council wanted to contemplate general fund dollars in a program that would assist rate payers, that is a policy determination that the council can make. I think, in particular, on this topic around water, you know, the monthly bills, as demonstrated on the slide, that was up earlier, a fairly, you know, still a notable increase, but one that is, I think, you know, still within a reasonable range, whereas the next item that we're going to address has some pretty significant increases. I don't know that the council would necessarily, you know, want to allocate general fund dollars on this one, but it is a policy determination that you could do. I think the challenge is the sort of the ongoing nature of it. In the past, the city did have a senior assistance program, but again, it was under the rate structure, and it was no longer allowed. But I think as we go to the next item, there are some more significant increases that may kind of get over the sort of the apex of consideration of, does it make sense to help folks with those rates, whereas this one's a little more modest?
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. You heard from the county here earlier in the comments section about him wanting to ask us to postpone our implementation of the 2018 process.
That was sewer. Councilmember, that was sewer.
I'm sorry?
It's the next item.
I'm sorry, that was related to sewer, not to water?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have anything further, councilmember?
Yeah, I don't think I have anything further. I would like to make a motion, but I think I would like to wait and see what other council people have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias, you also requested that this be pulled, and then we'll go to Councilmember Smith after that.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could pull up the presentation, and I think it's back one slide. I think that this, I'm really interested in this graph. Can you help me explain and read it one more time?
So, I'm sorry.
If I may, councilmember, what this is really saying is, we have a structural imbalance. We're spending more than we're bringing in every year, and in the next two years, we will spend all of our savings down, and by fiscal year '28, we won't have enough money to pay for operations.
That's what I thought I heard. I just wanted to confirm. So if no action is taken, and we stay the course, within just a couple of years, there will be no money in this fund to be able to keep the system going?
Sorry, and I don't want to say no money. We won't have enough money to pay for all of operations, let alone capital improvements. That is correct. And it doesn't bring us pleasure to bring rate increases to the council or to our constituents. The just, the reality of being good stewards of our operations and system is that we can't operate at the same costs, revenues, excuse me, we can't operate at the same revenues as we currently have today and stay functional beyond the next couple of years.
Got it. Can you, Ms. Budak or Christian, walk me through the Water Committee's rationale behind this proposed five-year plan?
The Water Committee, councilmember?
Sorry, the, I believe.
Water Board.
Oh, the Water Board.
Water Board, excuse me.
I will respectfully, councilmember, do you mind if we defer to Water Board members for their rationale?
I don't mind at all.
We could speak for them, but I'm not sure we want to.
Councilmember Smith? No, no, no. It sounded like you were being called upon.
Here's what I'm trying to get at, is in the proposal over five years, the most significant impact is the 34% increase in year one. What is the rationale behind biting the bullet early and seeing minimal increases in year two and beyond?
The rationale is that we have to do something, and you could spread out, you know, 20, 20, 20, 20, you know, you can spread it out if you want, but you need to solve the problem, you need to be honest about it, and sooner the better.
The other thing, if I may, the other consideration is, it only gets more expensive the longer that we wait. So the capital expenditures only, it doesn't get less expensive, it's more expensive to actually construct some of these projects. And, you know, again, we can defer it, but we will be paying more in the future. And so it's, again, as Councilmember Smith said, it's better to, you know, see that increase earlier, and that was, I believe, staff's primary recommendation to the Water Board when they presented it.
Councilmember Arias, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that that's an important consideration. I also think from a resident and end-user perspective, as, you know, all the households who will be impacted by this, I think the number was 165,000. I don't know if that's the population or the number of houses.
That's the population.
The population, thank you. I think what's important is predictability, right, and being able to, and I understand that the 2018 notice is going to give a couple of months, but we are also talking about if these rates were to go into effect, it would be during the summer, right, to start, which is also when folks also see the highest utility rates, if they have PG&E during the summer, trying to keep their house cool. And if they can't keep the thermostat low, what's the other natural alternative? Take a shower, cool the body down. And I think that this is, this is a tough pill for the community to swallow. I understand the impacts of us not taking action, but I think that I would like for us to consider alternatives in year two, year three, year four, year five, so that we can give families additional time to prepare for those increases. But I did have a couple of other questions.
If I may, we did actually do different alternative, different options, and the other options that we showed actually put our revenues below our reserve target. So basically, we were using, we were not keeping ourselves at our reserve target, which is the dark line, and we were falling below that. And those analysis were a 20%, 20%, 5 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2. Like, we tried to balance them out. We even looked at a straight 12% a year for five years. At 12% a year for five years, we would not, we would only have $5,000, or, I'm sorry, $5 million left in our fund balance. Like, it drops us right below our reserves. So we evaluated a variety of different options, and in the end, this was the only option that kept us above our reserves to keep a healthy fund, so we did have money available for emergencies, which includes CIPs as well as operation and maintenance.
So what if you were to do 12, 12, and the overall number that you increase in years three, four, and five actually exceeds what's currently projected?
You would still.
In total.
If I may, Ms. Budak, there's two different considerations. Again, first, it's sort of the compound interest on those, or the compounding value of those rate increases. Even if the total number is still 50%, but with, you know, more modest increases over time, because we don't get that 34% upfront, it actually affects the overall trend line to stay lower, even though you have the same 50% cumulatively. Because you're getting to that point later, you still struggle to have the total revenues be as high as we need to. The second thing I would reflect, though, is there may be some options where we dip below the reserve balance for a year or two, and then get back up above the recommended reserve balance. Not ideal, and I would never recommend to you a five-year plan that stays below the reserve line, because that is not good business and not good operations. But a couple of the options did dip below the reserve balance, but then climbed back above it again by the end of the five-year rate period.
I appreciate that, and I think that that should be something that we should consider, because 34% again is really difficult, especially coming during those summer months where it's the hottest. And those are all my questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question first on the conservation, 40% less water. Is that a per capita? Is that an entire system? Because you're growing customers. What really is that?
It is a gallons per capita per day. So it's a reduction within the home, but overall, it's a 40% reduction of water use.
Okay, so it is per capita, though. And then, I guess, could you go back to the graph that showed the other?
Oops, what did I do? Sorry. There we go. That one?
Yes. So I think it's important to realize, even with the proposed rate increase, our average is $55. Von Water, which is mostly northwest Bakersfield, would be at $80. Cal Water, who serves more people in Bakersfield, is more than twice as much, 118. And I would say that probably most of our disadvantaged communities are in Cal Water and East Niles. So I just wanted to point that out, that most of our residents are paying much more already. And as far as ways to long-term save tax. And as far as ways to long-term save taxpayers' money, I, I mentioned at the Water Board meeting that, you know, I think, you mentioned the energy cost is $12 million a year?
The energy cost is, this year, we're projecting around $10 million for our electrical costs within the department. And going up to $12 million next year.
And so, again, I think it's time to seriously look at, at some solar fields and, and create our own energy and, and save our users that way. So I, I'm in, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. I'm in favor of moving forward with what we've discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman, you also wanted to make a motion.
Yeah, so, yeah, so my, my motion was actually, let me, let me back up just a little bit. I, I don't think we know enough to be able to make a motion on this. I think that, one of my concerns is that we settled three years ago, and we, we agreed to a lesser amount. For whatever reason, we didn't adequately project what our expenses were going to be. And then we had these unfunded mandates come up that added to our burden. And I want to be sure that we're projecting our cost, and I get it, beyond five years, it's a, it's a guess anyway. I, I understand that. But I, I really want to be sure that we know what our expenses are for the next five years. I want to be sure that whatever rate we approve is going to be adequate for that period of time. And so I would recommend that we, but one other thing, to, to councilman Arias's point, I would like to return this to staff for a third-party evaluation of the projected cost over the next five years and the corresponding revenues. And to come back with alternate proposal for the structure of the rate increase. I don't know if that makes any sense.
It does make sense. Just a couple of things for council to be well aware of in changing our timeline and our process. In order for these, and these rates take a long time, or, excuse me, the, the process where we get out the notice to look at these rates takes a fairly long time to produce those notices, get those notices out to the public, come back for public hearings. And we would probably make a final determination on this topic in June. Because sewer is in late May, and this one is in June, correct? Ms. Budak, thank you. So it would come back in June, even if we started the process today. If we further delay the process, we're not going to make it before the budget adoption of this coming year. And so if we wait three or four months to do further analysis, we're looking at probably next year until we can really change the rate structure. And at that point, it's probably a bigger percentage increase than it is today. I think another alternative could be that, you know, what's on, what's before the council today is to provide the notice to residents of the Prop 218 hearing process. We do have to identify what the recommended rates are. But we could continue to go and do that further analysis while the 218 process is continuing forward. And then by, you know, June, inform the council of additional, you know, analysis that we have done before council sets the rate in June. You do have, you know, some limitations on, you know, being able to, you know, just pick and choose a number come June, but you could say, we're ready to move forward based on the analysis, or we don't move forward. But I think if, if we pause now, we're going to be, there, there will be some schedule, just impacts that council should be aware of.
For, for my standpoint, I, I think we're, I think we all know we're going to have to have a rate increase. So if it's a matter of continuing the 218 process to get public opinion, I guess personally, I'd be okay with that. You know, the question is, is the rate we're going to be asking for going to be adequate for that five-year period of time, and how we're going to structure it? And so that's what I'm referring back to staff in my motion, but the mayor's in charge of the motion, so.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. The last of what you said is just, I, I guess my motion was just to issue the Prop 218 with the proposal rate increases that we are showing. And if, at the time of the hearing, council agrees to do something different, it can do something different at that time. Is that correct?
Councilmember Smith, I would tell you that it really depends on what it is that you decide to do different, right? As a general rule, if it were less, if what you decided to do was less than what the Prop 218 notice indicated, then I would tell you that that's okay. But it really depends on how, how that's going to change.
Okay, yeah, that's my assumption, is that what we're showing is.
The maximum amount.
Maximum.
Correct.
I, I would also respond to the language of unfunded mandates. I think that, you know, that there's new technology, and there's, there's new science, and contaminants that weren't known are now known. And we want the cleanest water that we can have. And, you know, because there are chemicals that modern society produces, then modern society has to take those chemicals out, and it costs money. And I would also state that it's not that the projections were wrong four years ago, or whenever it was that we, it was like now, the, the political energy was not there to go forward with the recommendations of the consultant and staff. And, you know, we, we decided to back down and, and do less. And so now we have to do more. And so that's my comments and, and my motion.
Thank you, councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, actually, I was going to make the same point that councilmember Smith made, and I wanted to reiterate for the benefit of the public. In 2022, the city contracted with the consultant to prepare a five-year domestic water rate study. The consultant, consultant recommended a five-year rate increase of 15%, 10%, 10%, 3%, 3% annually. But council approved a rate increase of 10% in fiscal year '24, and four additional years of 6% increases. It's a total of 34%, at least 34%, I didn't compound it, when the consultant had approved, or had recommended 41% for us to, to meet the need. So, again, it wasn't that the consultant didn't have a good sense, or that we didn't have a good sense of what we needed, we did. But we chose to kick the can down the road, and now we're here in this situation. You know, I know this is a very difficult decision. No one wants to raise rates, but we also want high-quality water in our domestic water system. And we want to be able to deliver high-quality services. We want to maintain our systems. And so because of that, because I feel a responsibility to the whole city, I am also in support of councilmember Smith's recommendation.
So we have two motions. We will go first. Councilmember Smith's motion is on staff's recommendation. Councilmember Coleman, yours was second, and so we would take that first. Would you clarify your motion, please?
I think I can help you, councilmember Coleman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have written down a motion by councilmember Coleman to return this item to staff for a third-party evaluation for alternative proposals.
So that is the motion that we will vote on.
And if I may clarify, I assume that means we do not issue the 218 notices.
Correct.
Councilmember Coleman, is that what you had in mind? Because you said something else earlier.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we said that we were going to, because he, because it's, the, the amount is not likely to go down. The, the amount is more likely to go up. My whole point is that I don't want to be projecting rates on unfounded numbers, that it's going to cost us more to install the equipment we need, or it's going to be cost more in fees, or whatever it is. I don't want to be back here two and a half years from now and saying, well, we didn't collect enough money. And so to, to councilman Gonzalez's point, you know, that wasn't on the consultant. The consultant recommended more, and we, we selected less. I would like to know what the consultant says now. And I, I think that we may be too conservative in what it's going to cost to get through the next period of time, because we're trying to make the square peg fit in the round hole.
City attorney.
So what I hear you say, councilmember Coleman, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you do not want to send out the Prop 218 notices. You do not want to send those notices out, which I believe, with your motion, I think makes complete sense. I really, as the city attorney, I would advise us not to send out Prop 218 notices unless we really know what rate it is we're charging. Because you're just walking into the argument of, do we have to send out another Prop 218 notice? So councilmember Smith has approved staff's recommendation. Councilmember Coleman, return to staffer, return the item to staff for third-party evaluation for alternative proposals, and do not send out the Prop 218 notices.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, city manager, city attorney, sorry, and councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify something that you said earlier, Christian, if we were to move forward with councilmember Coleman's motion, can, can you reiterate for the benefit of the council and my benefit what that timeline crunch looks like?
I'm actually going to defer to Ms. Budak to help us think this through. It's, it's a little bit different, because these rates are charged on a monthly basis, you know, whereas our next item, the sewer, is charged, you know, on an annual or biannual basis. But if we, if we, if we do not move forward with the 218 notice, we send it back to staff, I assume that means several months of analysis, then we're probably, you know, we would probably be doing this sometime in the fall or mid-year of next fiscal cycle. We won't make it in front of the budget. Is that fair, Chris?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And so the soonest that it would come back to us is when again?
I would tell you, again, you, you're going to have to go out to bid for a consultant and everything. I mean, you're starting over again. I would tell you a minimum, a minimum of six months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I don't see any further questions. So we have the motion that councilmember Coleman presented. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion fails, with councilmembers Core and Weir absent, and councilmembers Gonzalez, Smith, and Bashirtash voting no.
Thank you. And now we'll take councilmember Smith's motion, which is upon staff's recommendation. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with councilmembers Core and Weir absent, and councilmember Arias voting no.
Thank you. Our next item is going to be rather lengthy, I, I'm assuming. So let's take a break until 7:30. Let's reconvene, please. Councilmember Coleman, it's 7:30, let's, please start. I'm going to ask, before we move on, well, I will say reconvening at 7:30, I will ask, is there anyone in the audience who opposes the public hearing item 9A? Is there anyone in opposition to that? Seeing none, colleagues, I'm going to request that, I'm going to ask, I'm going to move that up unless somebody objects, because I know we have people who have been waiting quite a long time for that item, and I have a feeling that our sewer item is going to take a while. So, city, city clerk, if you would, let's move on just to the hearing item. And our next item is public hearing. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. We'll hear statements from those first opposed to staff's recommendation, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the mic, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. Please be courteous to everyone who wishes to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing item 9A, public hearing to consider EOA grant agreement with Arts Council of Kern for $116,500. Economic Opportunity Area Incentive Program Grant Agreement for site improvements associated with the installation of a fire sprinkler system, fire alarm, water connection, fees, permits, and other related work is required at 1018 and 1020, 18th Street, Ward 2.
Thank you, city manager, Craig.
Thank you, mayor and council. As noted in some earlier comments this evening, this was part of the competitive downtown EOA process. That process is actually more rigorous than the typical EOA process, where we call for proposals, review them all at the same time competitively, score those. Those projects were reviewed in initial time by the Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. And a result out of that was recommendation for this award for this project. Ms. Byers, anything else to add?
Per government code 5, per government code 53083, anything greater than $100,000 does require a public hearing notice, and we complied with that, which was posted on March 12.
Thank you. So at this time, public hearing item 9A is open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? And I see that Jeanette Richardson would like to do that. So Jeanette, this would be your time to come forward. Welcome, please identify yourself, and would you raise the microphone, please?
I'm a little taller than you, huh?
Yes, you are.
I'm Jeanette Richardson, Executive Director of the Arts Council of Kern, Honorable Mayor Go, councilmembers, staff, and our community members, those who are left. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. You may know us more for our mural work. We're the Arts Council of Kern County. We have recently done a lot of murals here in Bakersfield. If you've driven down Garcia's Circle, if you've been to Q and 204, and if you've been to Linell Brahma Park, we have been doing some work with parks and recreation. Recreation and parks, I always want to say that the other way. So we're delighted to be here. I was talking to Jenny, I'm so sorry, Jenny. 25 years ago, Jenny and I are the only ones that were, are still in this, in this building. Oh, yeah. So it's kind of fun, that 25 years ago, we were working together. So I'm delighted to be here and present the reason that Bakersfield Sound is gone. They didn't have fire sprinklers. They couldn't hold concerts. They couldn't do other things, and that caused them to not be able to pay their rent. And that's, that's where we are. We are now, unfortunately for them, but for us, we now have the opportunity to melded the corner. We have an open space. We have the first building and the second building now all together. With the sprinklers, we're going to be able to hold large events in our space. We're going to be able to bring more students. Right now, we bring, we have the options of 144 kids that come in from Panama Buena Vista School. I mean, they're teachers, they're teachers, and they're extended school. We're training them. But we have to bring them in in small, little sections, because we can only hold 57 people in our 10,000 square feet. We need sprinklers. So I just want to give you a little bit of a history. We've been around for 47 years. I haven't been running it for 47 years. Sometimes it feels like it. But I just want you to know that we have the largest public, let me see, it's the Prison Arts Initiative in the state of California. We bring in lots of money to Bakersfield. We spend over $1.25 million on our employees and our contractors. So we are a money generator. We're not a sales tax generator, but we do employ a lot of people. We just hired our 15th employee today, and we have 38 contractors. So we are business. We are not, we're not, we're not a small nonprofit, and we can afford to pay our rent. We're, we have a good fund going there. So I just want you to know, councilmember. So last summer, we also housed, we hosted, I shouldn't. So last summer, we also housed, we hosted, I shouldn't say housed, we hosted the California Arts Council. First time in 40 years, they asked to come to Bakersfield. So they brought their big state meeting to us and we had to tell them, we can't exceed 57 people. And we take that seriously because it's not just the code, it's safety. It's safety. We need that. If you're aware, just behind us, the Toucan Building, we all call it the Toucan Building, it burned up. And another building, the Great America Antique Building, burned up. We can't afford to lose more buildings downtown. We're in a very old building. It's gorgeous inside. It's brick, it's open, it's got clear-story windows. It's an amazing building and we would like to have more than 57 people be allowed to come in at one time. So I have a bigger list, but since there's no opposition, I'm just going to ask you to please, please consider giving us some sprinklers.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in support of staff's recommendation?
Well, I'll just introduce one. Retired BPD Tony Martinez is on my board and I think you ought to give him a hand because he's just an amazing man. And I have Elva Martinez and Mary Ann Redmacher. The rest of my people left. So I feel for you guys.
Thank you. So seeing none who want to speak, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Richardson, for your comments and I want to thank the Arts Council for all the work that they've done throughout the last few years, several years, but certainly the last few years beautifying Ward 2. There are a lot of projects. We pushed hard about seven years ago now with Caltrans to get some dollars to do some improvements to some of the urban core and it was really wonderful when Caltrans awarded Kern Arts Council the contract to facilitate those projects and it's wonderful to see that. It's been an overwhelming success, so I just want to start there. I had a good.
May I interject? They're putting us up for the biggest awards, both state and nationally, for those, for those murals.
That's fantastic. Congratulations. Just a moment ago during our break, had a wonderful conversation with Councilmember Bashir Tash and he made a good point a moment ago in reminding us all that, you know, these grants don't just come from the ether, these are taxpayer dollars and we want to make sure that we scrutinize these projects very carefully. And I want to be clear, I have a pretty productive relationship with economic community development where, you know, I provide a lot of scrutiny of each application and the, and the basic question that I like to ask for every single applicant is really, what is that, what is, what is in the grant that will actually enhance the economic activity and vitality of that EOA area? And in this case, what would, what would enhance the economic activity and vitality of downtown? Give us some examples, Ms. Richardson, of how this Economic Opportunity Area Grant will enhance the economic vitality of downtown.
Well, the cool part, we were just with Moo Creamery and they're just going down the street and we were talking about how when we bring people in, they visit all the restaurants in our area. When we brought the folks in from Sacramento, we asked them to stay at the Marriott. We sent them around to the different restaurants. We gave them the places that they could go and enjoy downtown. And to a person, they said, we had no idea Bakersfield was this cool. So hopefully now when they'll want to come back and not wait 40 more years. So with that in mind, we cater, we get people to come in. We are always hiring people to come in and do things in our facility. So if we bring in a band, or we bring in spoken word, or we're doing a summer camp, we've got the opportunity to bring in 60 kids for summer camp. That's three more than we're allowed. So we really do need our sprinklers. So we can bring in lots of economic development there because people will then eat there. They'll want to stay there, they're going to want to walk around, they're going to shop there.
So this is more than just your office?
Oh, absolutely.
This is really a community space, an event space for you to activate this particular section of downtown?
We have a huge gallery and we have a makers market, so we have a little shop in there. We have the gallery. On April 11th, we opened the gallery for the best of Kern County artists. We'll have a beautiful show going on in there and we invite you all to come.
And on the flip side, without fire sprinkler systems, without fire alarms, you know, what happens to this building? What happens to these buildings? And Ms. Byers, from your experience as the director, looking at downtown, what are we experiencing?
So like we were talking about, some of these buildings, they're older, they have reduced capacity. The two spaces that they're going into, she's correct, Bakersfield Sound was in one of them and the fire sprinklers were an issue, but there was also a restaurant next door that tried to get one of the downtown competitive EOAs and we were working with them and working with them and they just couldn't get what it was that they wanted in that space and so that restaurant also left. So without this economic opportunity, we've done 70, we've completed 73 projects in the downtown. It's funny, my parents are out visiting from Texas and they lived here for 40 years and they came to pick me up and my mom was like, the downtown looks so good. And I thought it was funny because I got to hear it personally from my mother who is the, you know, like all mothers. So we just see that this activation, it really starts to have an impact that grows. Back when we did neighborhood stabilization, you kind of saw that once there was some improvement, it just moves out and the fact that Moo Creamery is moving to the old, the new China restaurant that it used to be, it's a beautiful building and I don't think without the improvements that were made through the redevelopment agency on Q and R Street that you would see this continued growth.
I agree with you and thank you so much. My, my experience as a council member representing downtown for eight years now is that there are many large buildings, historic buildings that have large square footage that are unutilized or underutilized because of basic things, because of fire sprinklers, because of ADA, because of elevators. And these are, you know, large capital costs that for many folks who are trying to make things happen, really are just additional barriers to actually make their project or their business pencil. And it can be far cheaper to seek out new construction somewhere else on the West Side. And so I think that if we really, as we look towards the next iteration of our downtown redevelopment fund, that we look at perhaps programming a, another competitive program where we can start chipping away at some of these larger buildings. So I'm going to make a referral that we, that we look at that for, for the very specific focused area of these fire sprinklers and other larger capital project, capital expenses that make it really difficult to do stuff in, in some of these bigger buildings. But for this matter, I'm going to make a motion to approve this item with one caveat and that is that the Kern Arts Council come back with a calendar of events on a regular basis. Thank you.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmembers Core and Weir absent.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson and Board for your leadership. I know when the California Arts Council was here, they were so complimentary of your leadership and the Board. So thank you very much. Thank you for being here and now we will move back to item 7G4. Councilmember Coleman requested that that be pulled along with Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Arias. So we'll have Councilmember Coleman start this off and I'm going to ask you colleagues to be concise in your language and in your questioning. Councilmember Coleman, please.
Yeah, I resemble that remark. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Coleman, would you like staff to provide a presentation on this topic as well?
That would be awesome, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. As we get that.
I was trying to be concise by not saying anything, so.
As we get, as we get that presentation teed up, let me just provide some quick context. This item, I would argue, is very distinct from the item we just heard. Even though they may feel similar, the background and the context is very different. And the first thing that I would start off by saying is I apologize that we haven't addressed this issue sooner, but it is long overdue and I think that's why it is such a large amount and why it is so challenging. But unfortunately, we're at a spot where, you know, we've been operating at a revenue stream that is, is so far below the average that it's now starting to affect our ability to operate and in particular will affect our ability to do more into the future. And you'll see some graphs which will show you this, but at our current rates, we are three times lower than most average cities in their costs for a similar service. And while I could be proud that Bakersfield is very efficient and we operate very lean, there's just no way that our operation is 300% more efficient than similar operations. And so we are long overdue to address this issue and so I'll invite Ms. Boudak to come and walk through this slide presentation to lay out where we're at and what we think we need to do to be solvent moving forward.
Thank you. So we are going to talk about the sewer user rate increase. This is just specifically for the user rate that's on the tax roll. It's not to be confused with the sewer connection fee that's paid by developers. So it really is associated with the tax roll. We are looking at doing an increase to the sewer user rate due to increased cost to operate and maintain the existing system and we need to evaluate our Plant 2 and our Plant 3 and ensure that we are utilizing the best technologies and we have improvements to ensure that those facilities continue to operate efficiently and, and can provide the service for the residents of Bakersfield. The wastewater responsibilities are to treat wastewater and handle biosolids for over 400,000 residents. We provide 2 million gallons per day of tertiary water to the sports complex, accept 1.9 million gallons of septage and grease from hauling companies, and meet all state requirements, specifically those associated with the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. One of the challenges is the maintaining of aging infrastructure. We have two treatment plants, wastewater treatment plant 3 that treats approximately 32 million gallons, or has a capacity of 32 million gallons per day, and wastewater treatment plant 2, sorry, Plant 3 is in the southwest, Plant 2 is in the, I guess, northeast or eastern, east of the 99. And that particular facility is, treats, can treat up to 25 million gallons per day. The plant was constructed in 1958. It was upgraded with secondary treatment in 1978 and again, there was an expansion done in 2000 to bring the plant from 19 million gallons per day up to 25 million gallons per day. But no upgrades were made to the existing structures. So anything that was built in 58 has been utilized since 1958. Anything that was built, any of the structures built in 78 has been utilized since 78. In addition, we have approximately over 1,000 miles of sewer lines, 55 sewer lift stations, 27 storm drain lift stations, and 650 miles of storm drain that's all maintained as part of the treatment and collections system for wastewater. It's important to note that in 2006, the user rate was $135 annually on the tax roll per the resident. In 2016, that was increased to $215 annually, so approximately $17.91 a month. And in 2025, today, we have a rate of $239 annually, which equates to just less than $20 per month to operate the system. Some of the more significant impacts that are affecting us to have, that are a result to ensure that we have a rate increase, is a significant O and M cost, electrical cost, incorporating sewer and storm drain miscellaneous CIPs and O and M, oh, sorry, operation and maintenance. The streets department operates and maintains the sewer collection and the storm drain systems. And so we work closely with Public Works Director Zach Meyer and his staff as they evaluate the systems and determine which capital improvement projects need to be put into the budget and also identify, there's cost identified with their staff maintaining the systems. So we work together. We manage the fund, but they do the work. So we have to collaborate a lot to ensure that we're providing them the revenue that they need to do their projects and they're providing the services to ensure that the systems continue to operate efficiently. I would actually, I would like to ask Yvette Roldan, she is the Assistant Director of Water Department, the wastewater manager, to talk about some of the challenges with wastewater treatment plant 2 and why we believe that we need to do a significant replacement or upgrade on this facility.
Hello, councilmembers, Mayor Go. So wastewater treatment plant 2, as indicated previously in the presentation, the last major upgrade was designed in 1997 and fully put into operation in 2000. A lot of the structures predate that. That is the most current. It is a trickling filter facility. We have three trickling filters. That is the biological process that we have. If you have visited our Plant 3 facility, that is an activated sludge. That is a much newer technology, is able to better treat wastewater compared to a trickling filter facility. One of the things that sort of brought us to this point of, we really need to look at Plan 2, is every time we went in to do what we thought was a minor or just bare-bones needed repair for any one of the structures, every time we basically lowered the water level and had eyes on the concrete structure underneath the water surface, we had significant pieces of concrete missing, rebar, structural rebar exposed. For example, we are currently in the process of updating our bar screens at Plant 2. It was awarded as a $3 million project and we potentially have a $1 million change order that we are reviewing, probably not going to do it all, but that was being caused by, once we have eyes on the raw concrete underneath the surface, there is substantial corrosion and exposed structural rebar. So it needs to be addressed. But some of the things that are mentioned here, so with that, and just sort of knowing what we have come across with current and past projects, once we start opening up the remainder of the structures, once we start looking at every trickling filter, every digester, every primary clarifier, secondary clarifier, we know what we can see above on the surface, but it's all that below the water level that we just know is not in the best condition and it is going to be a costly repair. And once we start adding those up, we considered, are we really using, doing a benefit to the citizens by just repairing what's there or do we really need to look at changing the technology? Trickling filters predate activated sludge and even activated sludge was the newest thing in the 70s. So there is a lot better technology out there, more efficient, that could provide a better quality and better level of treatment for our residents. And there's also additional opportunities of introducing recycled and reclaimed water facilities within the plant that could then further service the, the community in the surrounding areas. So that is sort of what led us to this position where we really need to contract an outside consultant, have them do a full evaluation and come up with the preliminary design and really look at and evaluate what is the best use of our technology and our sewer pair funds to move forward and make sure that we are able to provide the level of treatment for future, not just five years, 10 years. These systems really need to last 20-plus years. Some of the items mentioned on this slide, you know, that, that cost $520 million. That is a big number. That is a number being used based off of industry average when looking at a 25 million gallon per day capacity treatment plant. That number will be buttoned up as we go through this evaluation, as we answer the questions of what technology, technology should we implement, what structures do we really need to look at? One of the other things for electricity costs, that Plant 2 has two cogent, cogeneration engines. They are currently not operable just because they are not beyond repair. They haven't been able to operate for about the last five years. So getting renewable energy, you know, getting cogens back, you know, do we add more solar to that facility to offset electrical costs? So those are things that will be closely analyzed, evaluated, but looking at, we are going to need substantial funds to make sure that we address these concerns, even the ones that we do know. And that is where these numbers are coming from. Required insignificant O and M costs. I just spoke a lot about addressing the aging infrastructure, but we also need to be able to maintain and operate the existing infrastructure. So the O and M costs that is electric- So the O and M costs that is electrical costs, that is personnel, equipment, repair and maintenance for existing, and just buying replacement parts for some of these equipment that we have, just be mindful that these systems and the equipment and the infrastructure, they are being exposed to wastewater every single day, every single minute of every single day, every single day of the year. So these do not stop.
So again, when we determined the amount of revenue needed to offset the expenses, we again looked at all of the operating budgets. We looked at the operating budget for Plant Two, Plant Three. We worked with Streets and looked at the operating budget for the sewer collection system, the storm drain system. We looked every line by line and we evaluated what our current expenses are, and we used inflators to increase for CCI, increase for personnel, and looked at our, our projections for electricity. We really looked at the operations and evaluated it and determined that we were going to have an increase every, every single year because every year things tend to go up. We also looked at, as Yvette said, we evaluated Plant Two. We got to the point of when you started adding up all the potential improvements, that we came to the conclusion that it's most likely going to be some type of a significant upgrade or a full rebuild. And that's where we identified the cost of being approximately $450 million for construction.
If I may, Ms. Budak, before we leave this slide, we've also done some analysis that shows that even without a rate increase, we start to see our, our revenues not be sufficient and so that we would also drop below our recommended reserve line, just, you know, with regular operations and maintenance, let alone any large capital investments.
Thank you. So what this graph reflects is it is the proposed option that was proposed, presented and proposed during the Water Board, and it identifies that the goal would be to collect the revenue to cover our current operation costs and our future operation costs as for the entire system and the cost to rebuild Plant Two, with the estimated cost of, I believe, being 550 million, and that would be design, construction, and construction management services. Working with our Finance Director, Randy McKegan, it's important that to borrow money for this type of a facility, you would pay a lot more to pay back the bond. So the goal was to collect the money over the next five years, have all the money available. As we're collecting it, we would do the design, we would work on our permits and our environmental, that when we get ready to go into construction, which is anticipated to be 2030, 2031, we would have all the revenue to be able to award the contract and move forward with construction without having to borrow money and not having to pay those interest rates. I would defer to Mr. McKegan if he wanted to talk more about bonds, but the goal was really to not have to bond for this project. This slide evaluates the Bakersfield's current rate at 239 to the top cities within California. We are the lowest, we have actually been the lowest in the state of California since 2006. And so that explains kind of where we're at now. The other cities have a higher rate, and it's a higher average rate, but they've been collecting it for a longer period of time. That's, we've had such a low rate for such a long period of time that we need to jump above them. And the proposed rate increase is $950 to be added to the sewer user tax roll. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Ms. Budak. Going back to Councilmember Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So there's three stations now, correct? There's three sewers?
There's actually two.
There's two?
Wastewater Treatment Plant Two and wastewater treatment Plant Three.
That's the one out in southeast?
Plant Three, yes. Plant Two is in southeast.
Like Cottonwood Road area?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other one is like Ash?
Yes.
Okay, where's the third one?
It's actually, can you explain what happened to Treatment Plant One?
So Treatment Plant One, honestly, it was more like a glorified lift station. It was previously located-
Is that what that guy was doing in the picture, with the fishing in there?
No, no, that was a secondary clarifier. No, so Plant One used to be behind what is now the current animal shelter off of Mount Vernon. If you look at our sewer system, it kind of like collects in that section. When it was decommissioned, the numbering of the plants was not changed just to not confuse for future, because then you'd have to keep track of, is this Plant Two pre, pre-decommissioned or post-decommissioned? So the numbering was not changed.
So what's your plan to manage the capacity when you rebuild Station Two, like Station Plant Two, whatever you want to call it?
I think the evaluation will determine the, sorry, will determine how it is phased.
Is there a phasing way you can do that, or do you have to tear it all down and build it all up?
Yeah, no, absolutely. This would need to be phased in because we would need to maintain service throughout. And so the Plant Two, just to be clear, at this point, we are not anticipating additional capacity. We're really just trying to replace existing infrastructure. So it wouldn't be a capacity growth. It really is just to address aging infrastructure.
Well, the reason I ask you that question is because especially that station out in the southeast, you know, we're going to grow the capacity there a lot in the next five years.
So should it be determined that additional capacity is needed? That is a connection, a sewer connection discussion driven by developer fees, not sewer users.
I see. So any expansion of the facility will be paid for by connection fee?
That is the intent of connection fees, yes.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Is your intent to acquire any more property for future locations?
I don't believe that our intent would be to acquire any additional lands. We currently operate about 5,000 acres of farmland, and so that's what we utilize the effluent and the solids on. And so the evaluation really is to not only look at the treatment, but how we utilize our farmlands, how we utilize our dams that are to the north. It's really looking at the entire system and making sure that we are operating, that we're making the best decisions on the future of Bakersfield, for the plant, for the land, and for how everything is operated. A tertiary system would be very beneficial, that we could maybe then utilize for streetscapes in that area with, with tertiary water on landscape in lieu of using potable water. So lots of things to consider and evaluate.
Well, my only, not my only concern, but my concern is that we continue to have capacity for the growth that we're going to have, you know, we're going to approve a general plan sometime this year, that, you know, that's going to take us out to 2045. And, you know, my expectation is the population is going to double in that amount of time. And so I want to be sure that we have, you know, capacity so we don't have to have building moratorium because we didn't plan well enough for that.
We are evaluating the capacity issue at Plant Three, and we are going to be talking with developers in the fall about Plant Three as well because of the development, the connection fee, to be able to expand Plant Three. And when we do our evaluation, we'll, we'll look at, we've already met, I've already reached out to Mr. Burns, and he's provided me some growth numbers to help us plan for the capacity of Plant Two if it's above the current 25 million gallons per day.
Okay. So I just want to make one, I appreciate you trying to do this without any debt. So I do appreciate the, the no bond approach to that. I do see this one as significantly different on the water rate increase because it looks like we just failed to keep pace with where we should be on rates. And so two questions. One is, I don't understand the county's objection to this, to this filing at this time. They don't seem to be opposed to the rate increase. They seem to be opposed to the timing. So have you not had any conversation with the county, or is this an ongoing dispute?
So I can have Yvette clarify, but she was at her, at her level, working with the staff member from the county. She informed them in, I believe it was February, that we were working on a rate increase, but we were still in the evaluation mode, and that we would have a better understanding after we presented it to the city manager and to the Water Board. Upon doing that, within one or two days after the Water Board meeting, she again reached out to the staff member at the county and advised that we were doing an increase in the amount. So there has been some communication at, at her level. I don't know if in the past, my understanding is in the past, we haven't communicated that way. And I don't know if staff or Yvette want to add anything there, but it seems like in the past, when they do an increase, we don't necessarily know and vice versa.
So is it inappropriate to hear from the county and what their objection is? Is that inappropriate?
No, no, well, or at this stage, I think, I think, you know, I'll defer to the city attorney, but I think if council members have specific questions of stakeholders here today, you can ask those questions. A couple of things I would add to this consideration. I will acknowledge that this was, it was not on my radar to really make a large overture to the county because, you know, it's, it was not in my mindset that typically we don't have unincorporated residential units that are affected by our sewer rates because we have very few that are on city sewer. That is typically, we require annexation in order to extend our utilities to individuals, but there was one area called the community, is it community?
CSA, sir.
But community service, assuming county service area 71 was adopted a very long time ago, before some of the policies the city had about whether we would extend utilities, you know, into areas that had not been annexed. And as noted in public comment, there's about 600, you know, units that are within that CSA 71 that are, that are impacted by this. I would note that CSA 71 is fairly unique in its sort of public policy and administration, but we appreciate that, you know, the county has brought forward that it is a challenge for CSA 71. And I think in fairness, while we had some, you know, early communication within 2025 about this, you know, the ability to ramp up a 218 notice process as we've described today, it's a lot of work to get it going and it takes several months to get it done. And so I think the county is in a unique spot where they're unlikely to be able to do a full 218 notice, get to the Board of Supervisors and do a full 218 notice before this next cycle where the county assessor could get it on the tax rolls for, you know, this summer cycle of taxes. That being said, I would just offer, since we're on this topic, that we're happy to work with the county to try and find, you know, creative solutions so that there's not negative impacts in the county's ability to collect enough revenues to be able to pay for this increase. Because how it actually works is the county pays the city for the sewer costs and they collect an assessment from those 600, you know, units, and then the county pays the city directly. So we're not billing to their customers directly. And so it does put the county in a spot where, you know, they, they have to deliver based on the charges, but they may not be able to collect the full amount of those charges. I think, given that it is such a small percentage of our total citywide sewer system, that we can work out cooperatively with the county, some solutions that, that are helpful to them. In addition, we're willing to go the extra mile to provide notices to individuals who may be in CSA 71, although it won't meet the county's official 218 requirements. We're happy to get the notice out so that folks are more aware earlier of some of these realities. But yes, it is, it is unique that we have some, you know, unincorporated residents kind of stuck in a little bit of this limbo from, from the creation of the CSA 71 many years ago. Anything to add, City Attorney?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I need to hear from the county person after all, but one last thing on the adequacy of the rate increase. How confident are we that that rate increase is going to take us through the next five years?
As I stated, we've, we've evaluated our line items directly for the operations. We have bid jobs recently to get an idea and understanding of the costs associated with doing improvements. We work directly with Public Works, and their staff is very knowledgeable about lift stations, storm drain stations, and we also put an inflator on those. Zach, do you have anything to add on that?
Just to reiterate, anything with the collection system, it's still Public Works responsibility. So looking at all the sewer lift stations, sewer lines, trying to upgrade and upsize sewer lines due to capacity issues, these projects were taken into account as we try to project out the next five to 10 years.
Okay. And is it, is it not possible, this is probably a question for the city manager, is it not possible to have a rate increase that includes some kind of a, you know, automatic accelerator?
You can approve rate increases that would basically be at sort of the consumer price index. We've got one example of that in solid waste. But what I, and again, had we done that over the last 20 years, we would be in a much better spot. But also, I think, one of the challenges is that sometimes, you know, a consumer price index escalator might be 2%, 3%, but actual inflation, you know, is a little bit different sometimes in CPI. But also, there may be changes in, you know, some of the, again, regulations, mandates, capital projects. So CPI doesn't always keep up with rates, but it would have been wise to do that over the years.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
So I'm part of the Water Board, and I was first in favor of Option One to bring this to the full council because I understand the need for us to find or generate the revenue necessary to meet our need in Treatment Plant Number Two. But I've heard about a number of stories from, from my constituents who are really experiencing some tough times. And so I do hesitate to continue supporting that. Chris, in our Water Board presentations, you produced the different options. Can you show those to us or walk us through various different options?
So when we did the evaluation, we really looked at it as four options, but Option One and Two were really to collect the full revenue for the plant reconstruction or replacement. And then Options Three and Four were to determine, to still have the funds to deal with operations, but collect approximately half of the funds needed. And so that Option Three was discussed, and it would be an increase to $705, and that would enable us to provide the revenue needed for the day-to-day, the CIPs have been identified, and about half, about $250 million. With that option, we would then have to either bond or sometime prior to construction, potentially doing another small increase that could pay the bond back faster. The challenge with this is overall, you still have to find a way to collect enough revenue to cover half of the construction cost.
And just so that I'm clear, and maybe for the benefit of the public, when we go out to bid for this particular project, we don't necessarily have to have all funds secured at that point.
That is correct, Councilmember. Again, if we choose to bond, you can bond for, you know, significantly higher costs. You have to have certainty that you can, with your revenues over the life of that bond, pay the debt service, but we do not have to have all proceeds in order to bid the construction.
Okay. And when we look at a five-year And when we look at a five-year increase, just in full transparency, I was exploring this topic with various different city staff members and trying to see if we can maybe extend it beyond, beyond the five years to seven. But there's actually government code that inhibits us from doing that. Can you, can you clarify that for me and for the public?
Yes, mayor, councilmember Gonzalez, that is correct. Under Prop 218, it can only go out, it can only be extended to the fifth year.
Okay. I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues. My position today is that we pursue option three, which is less of an impact for the ratepayers this next year. And it helps us address some of those capital projects that are necessary. And then also afford us some more time through the design process to understand the actual cost and then proceed with the financing strategy in the upcoming few years. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt option three and send that for 218 notice.
Councilmember Arias, you also had asked for this to be pulled and then we'll go to councilmember Smith.
Thank you, mayor. I'll try to keep my comments brief on this issue. I think that I'm internally conflicted on this issue as well. I think it was back in 2020 or 2021 when I first joined the council and realized that there is a huge swath of undeveloped farmland in southeast Bakersfield in Ward 1. And had early conversations with a couple of developers and talked with Christian about, you know, really opening up some of these spreading fields as that next potential, you know, heavy manufacturing logistics opportunities, job creating opportunities for the city of Bakersfield, but specifically for Ward 1 residents and families. And it's taken us so many years to get to this point where, you know, there's a real meaningful opportunity for us to free up some of that land to create those opportunities. At the same time, I think about all of the families who have been struggling for years, specifically folks who are living on a fixed income. These are, you know, our veterans. These are our elderly community members who, you know, live off of social security, you know, folks who live off of a fixed VA benefit on a monthly basis. These are folks who struggle, like I said, even before these rate increases and will continue to struggle even more if we make these increases. I also think about some of the challenges that they will be facing as a household headed into the future. With, you know, politics aside, there have been significant discussions at the federal level about potential cuts to Medicaid that will come down here in the next couple of months. There have been serious conversations about cuts to social security that will impact hundreds of thousands of households across this country. And I think that we have to do everything that we can at the local level to help folks literally survive and fight for the next day. And I think that timing is really what it comes down to for me. I think it's very clear we have to upgrade the sewer plant number two. I just don't know that now is the right time. And I just want to read for the record a text message that I received from one of my constituents who said, "Rate increases hurt when food and gas are at all-time highs. With summer soon arriving, so is water usage. We are stretched so thin on our monthly budgets as is. This is way too high of an increase, particularly for folks that live on a fixed income." I know several dozen families who live in Ward 1, who live on a fixed income, month to month, paycheck to paycheck. And I didn't know that there were other options for us. And at this point, I am, I would only be open to approving option four with minimal impact in the first year with more marginal increases in the years after that. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, mayor. Can you go back to the graph that showed all the other jurisdictions?
It's another presentation, so it'll take us just a moment.
No, no.
We had it in two different slide decks.
Oh. Yeah. So why is that not? Oh, there it is, okay. So I guess the point was made that, you know, take Sacramento or Anaheim, for example. Do we know how long they've been charging those rates?
No.
The, the comment was made that, you know, they've been charging those rates for a long time and that's why we have to go higher. And I think that's probably true. And so when you're the cheapest and you only patch what's broke, then sooner or later, you have to pay. And the longer we wait, the higher this number goes, in my mind. You know, if we do something now, then it's 950 to, you know, get it paid for in five years. We wait two or three years and we're up to the, you know, 2,500 like San Francisco. I don't know. It just, it just keeps exponentially going up the longer you wait. And that's not good for the community. In the long run, they end up paying a lot more. And same idea with financing. So let me understand councilmember Gonzalez's proposal. Go back to number three. That essentially gets us halfway in three years and then we borrow the other half?
We would actually collect the halfway within the five years. So at the end of 2029, 2030, we would have collected approximately 250 million, 260 million towards the cost. We anticipate in design being approximately 40 to 50 million. And then construction would be 450 plus CM, which would be around 520. It would collect about half of it, option three.
And, and then you borrow the other half?
And then you have to borrow or do another rate increase somewhere prior to 2930 to increase it to try and collect more during construction.
I guess I'm still where I was, you know, at the water board meeting. What's cheapest in the long run? And we need to make up for the mistakes that we've made in the past. Or, I mean, you know, you pay now or pay later and later is now. Or in the future, it's even worse. And we're not saving our constituents money. We're costing them more money by continuing to wait. So I, again, will make the motion for option one, which was staff's recommendation, I guess, and to move forward with the 218.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other requests to speak? Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah. So I appreciate councilmember Smith's line of thinking. I think it's right on. One of the, that's one of the considerations why I was not as supportive and I didn't make a motion to approve option four because while it is a smaller increase in year one, overall, it actually is a larger increase to the ratepayer. The reason why, and I'm going to give my best pitch for option three, is that beyond 2030, if we choose to bond, and I understand there are lots of costs to bonding, we still are generating that revenue from these increases to service that debt. Is that correct? The $250 million that we're generating, once the project is already in construction, we can bond against it. We use that 250 million over the following five years, 2030 to 35, to service that debt. It may be much higher, given the bond cost. But there are no, I know there are a lot of caveats to what I'm suggesting, but in, just for the purpose of just keeping things simple, I think there is a strategy to pursue option three, try to be sensitive to the cost burden for the ratepayer, but then also get to some sort of position where we can make this project work.
Mr. McKagan.
Good evening, Mayor Go. Councilmember. So the plan with option three does require that you have to borrow $250 million. So the additional revenue that you're generating from those fees would cover that debt service. But we do need to understand, to councilmember Smith's point, you will be paying approximately $185 million in interest. So that would be over 30 years. So in addition to borrowing $250 million, saving $250 million, you're actually adding costs of 185 or so million. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Bashir Tosh.
Any of the upgrades going to play into the role of the water conservation that we have to have? Would they count recycled water and the use of that toward any of that in the years coming up from our state?
So water conservation, actually, on a wastewater facility, there's already been several reports done that there is an impact. And so as part of our evaluation of plant two, we will need to look at that. When you have water conservation, you then have a higher level of solids. And so that does impact how we operate the plant. I think that's one of the reasons why we are looking at using other options other than trickling filters is because other technologies may provide us a better processing, knowing that we're going to have less water.
If I may just add on to that, I think is a smart question, councilmember, because even though it might not help us with the conservation, our ability to take, you know, tertiary treated water and use that for other purposes is a great savings. And even if it just goes, if we have other uses, I think our, the value of our water is going to continue to increase. And it's a, it's a finite resource that's, you know, going to continue to have value. And even if we can put it back into the ground for groundwater points or use it in other ways, there's a lot of value there. So it may not equate to some of the conservation, but I think in, through the analysis, there could be both revenue generation or just cost deferrals by using that water smarter through better technology.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, mayor. We mentioned tertiary a couple of times. Is the plan to go to tertiary on this plant?
That would be my recommendation, yes. I think we have to work directly with planning and Public Works and start talking about how we have purple pipe installed with future development because we don't currently, I'm not sure about the current system today. But if we can get ahead of it and start putting some purple pipe in and have a tertiary system off a plant two, definitely being able to utilize that water for parks or streetscapes would just provide us an overall benefit.
So then you don't need the spreading fields anymore? Or you still need them?
Oh.
We would evaluate, we would need spreading fields, but it could diminish the total square footage of them, yes.
So you could sell those theoretically?
Or alternate use, I don't know. That would be a upper management.
Yeah, if I may, I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves because there's a lot of unknowns there. But it has been rolling around in my head for a couple of years, but especially tonight, that depending on the amount of acreage that we could take out of service, that could be a pretty significant development opportunity that could generate significant revenues that could be then used to pay for costs of the upgrade to the plant. So I think we can include that in our analysis. I don't want to overstate that to say, hey, that's our silver bullet to having weighed, you know, tons of savings. But I do think it's a genuine, the real possibility to get some significant revenues to put back into the plant upgrades that made those, that development possible.
And I guess the next question would be, this is all about plant two. So plant three is old and wearing out. At the same time, what's our plan there?
So plant three did have a significant upgrade in 2010. And there has been a strong maintenance program, a stronger maintenance program on the plant two facility. We are currently evaluating.
Did you mean plant three?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yeah, sorry, plant three, thank you. Plant three has had a more detailed maintenance plan for the infrastructure. We are looking at capacity at plant three. We are identifying that due to all the growth in the Southwest, we are getting to a point where our capacity is going to need to be evaluated and possibly expanded. So that will be further discussions in, with the developers.
And plant two is 25 MGD. What's, what's plant three?
Plant three is 32 million gallons per day. And we are near 24 million gallons per day currently, which is about 75%. And that's the time when you start talking about an expansion.
And plant two, what's the actual?
14. 14?
14 of the 25.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm still, $200 million in interest is not saving the community money. So I'm still in favor of option one and moving forward. Thank you.
So we have two motions. We'll take councilmember Smith's motion first, which is granting staff authorization on the mail notices. You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with councilmembers Core and Weir absent and councilmembers Arias and Gonzalez voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please. While the clerk is getting ready. Young man, are you with Bakersfield College? Congratulations on staying all night. Are you in professor, yes. Are you in professor Holmes' class? Come, come out, come and see me after and I will make sure that we communicate your diligence. Next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, mayor. In lieu of the past decision here and these two items that we talked about, water and the sewer, I'd like to make a referral to staff to evaluate what kind of program we can develop to provide relief for those people that face a financial hardship as a result of these, these two motions, these two decisions. And I don't know what that looks like. I'm going to rely on staff to make some kind of recommendation of what, what we could consider. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to relate. I was at a conference a week ago and it was councilmembers throughout the state and supervisors and gentlemen from San Diego came up to me and so that they, you know, everybody passes through Bakersfield, but they stopped to stretch their legs and they walked around our downtown and specifically mentioned, you know, the Padre Hotel. But also mentioned how, you know, Padre Hotel, but also mentioned how, you know, what a good-looking downtown and how clean it was. And, you know, I just like to relate those things, that we are moving in the right direction, and people do notice. And I would, along that line, we have used our TOT Transit Occupancy Tax as capital improvement projects and kind of just in the general fund. And I know different jurisdictions do different things with it and focus more on tourism, which is an economic driver in a lot of communities and drives a certain amount of the economy in Bakersfield. And so it seems to me that we should split that out more. The TOT could be focused on things that promote tourism and promote that portion of the economy, because that's where that money's coming from. So I'd make that referral to look at at budget time. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah, I love that idea. I mean, the TOT should really be reinvested to generate additional TOT and local sales tax dollars. I think that's a smart strategy, and I don't see a reason why we can't do that. There's plenty of examples of other cities that have been very strategic in making investments to improve quality of life, enhance quality of life, and also attract new visitors to their communities, and have benefited significantly by those economic enhancements. So I appreciate that referral. I wanted to just make a comment that, you know, oftentimes, and for decades, people from Bakersfield migrate to the Central Coast. But last weekend, we saw the reverse, where the Central Coast actually came to Bakersfield. And Hoagies, which is a very popular restaurant on the Central Coast, actually opened a restaurant right in downtown Bakersfield. And that's a huge plus, that's a huge win for Bakersfield and for downtown Bakersfield. And like I said earlier, downtown Bakersfield just gets better and better and better. One of the things I do want to explore, though, is they and many others are hit with these really high traffic impact fees. And I really can't understand the real nexus between the improvements and also those impact fees. And so I'd like us to, again, look at additional tiers for all impact fees as it relates to the urban core and specifically to the downtown area. Thank you.
See no other requests to speak, so we stand adjourned at 8:39.